Call the order, the March 29th, 2022 School Committee meeting. It is currently 6:30 right on the dot. I am opening the meeting this evening because we just had an election and we do have to reorganize by policy. So with that, I'll go to item number two, which is reorganization of the school committee. We'll start with taking nominations for the chair role. Once the nominations have ended, I'll end nominations. If there's more than one nomination, we'll vote either way, but if there's more than one, we'll take those votes in order. And then I will open nominations after we have selected the chair. Actually, I will turn the meeting over to the chair, whoever that may be. And then I'll be able to sit back and not do any more with the reorganization. So it's been a while since I've done this. Veteran school committee members, any feedback or anything I missed or you'd like to add?
I've got a motion for you when you're ready.
All right, so we're all set? Okay, so open nominations for chair.
So the motion that I have doesn't quite fit the parameters you set forth, but we'll see if the rest of the committee is interested in it. And I modeled it a little bit after the select board the other night. So I'd like to nominate Michelle Bergstrom to be the chair. And then I'd like to nominate myself to be the vice chair. But I'd like to put on the caveat that I'm interested in potentially serving as the vice chair through September. And then I'd like to have an opportunity for another member of the committee to serve in that role if they are so interested. And that's my motion.
Okay. I have the motion as read on the table. Are there any other motions?
We're breaking the mold tonight. So I have a motion, but it's with a preamble. With specific interest-
Why do I feel like I'm in an episode of Hamilton?
With specific, I haven't seen that yet. With specific interest in maintaining our leadership through Springtown meeting. I nominate Karen Bolinesse to serve as chair if she'll do it.
Okay, any other nominations? I will ask if Ms. Bergstrom, do you accept the nomination?
I would, I actually have a question about Mr. Brady's motion. Does our policy allow for the nomination of both chair and vice chair at the same time?
It is silent.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I know the select board did it, but I know we have specific policies, so.
It was not the, what I opened with, so it's different than what I was asking for, because I was asking specifically for motions for chair. But it would be for the committee to discuss. But do you accept the your own nomination, I would assume, Mr. Brady as vice chair?
Did Michelle accept hers?
I believe so. She said a question.
I actually was questioning whether that was-
Okay.
Whether we were allowed to do it in that way or not, or whether we had to take them on at a-
So assuming that you accept it, what do we make sure that everyone's accepting their nominations? And then we can have discussion? And because obviously it's a little bit unorthodox or-
Yeah.
With a caveat and a preamble. I've not had either one of those before.
We didn't want to make it easy on you.
Apparently not, this is my, you know. And Ms. Brady, if you just confirm-
I do, yes.
And Ms. Bolinesse, do you accept the nomination as chair from Mr. Nixon?
I would accept it with the preamble. Bet you have.
Okay. In terms of being through Springtown meeting.
Being through Springtown meeting.
Okay, all right, so with that is the discussion on the first motion.
Mr. Nixon, could you talk a little bit more about?
Yeah, so I'm, first of all, I'm glad we're all back. This is a good group of people. I think one of the things that we really need to do is find a way to have a workshop to talk about our individual interests, some of our shared interests, our individual goals, our shared goals. I think we need to talk about kind of what makes the school committee run as a railroad and what lifting we're able to do to make that happen. But we also have some outward facing roles, whether it's our relationship, whether it's service on other committees, or how we engage with other elements in town. And I think we should have some conversation about that as well. Because the work in those roles is kind of different. For some of those, it's a heavier lift than others. I think that'd be a very important conversation to have. And then to loop that into a conversation about goals of the committee and then who really wants to be chair and vice chair and have a frank conversation. Always, I gotta find another, I'm sorry. That rolls off the tongue. I gotta find another way. I keep saying I'm not gonna do that. Have an honest conversation about the workload. So that if folks really want to serve, we understand what that means. And maybe we even have to make some priorities as a committee about things that we're gonna focus on in the coming year and some things we have to maybe punt either to another year or make it, I'm looking at Dr. Ellenima, an administrative task instead of a school committee task.
I was looking for some things that-
Yeah, I'm sure you were.
She was twiddling her thumbs and-
I saw her twiddling her thumbs in her office the other day.
But anyway, but to put that in the context of the timeline, I feel particularly because it's the five of us back at the table, I feel like truly we can find a way to get that done by the end of Springtown meeting. And I feel like we would be a very high functioning committee having had that conversation. Yeah.
Okay. More discussion on either of the nominations?
I'll just chime in and say, I think Mr. Nixon's suggestion or motion is interesting. It's a very thoughtful approach. He touches on a number of things that I'm very interested in with regard to, you know, really functioning as a group. I think we have, I think you're right, we have a great group of people here. You know, but there's, you know, work I think that we can do in terms of prioritization and figuring out, you know, what are we trying to accomplish this year? As you say, what might be pushed off to a subsequent year? You know, and then assessing, you know, commitments, you know, leadership. I think I'd just add one other piece, which picks up on, I think of somewhat Mr. Brady, I think is getting at, which is also around building capacity in the team. Because I think part of his proposal is around, you know, giving more people opportunities to, for leadership within the committee. And I think that's really good, too. I think as part of this conversation, if we end up going in that direction, you know, I'd love to really think about how we build capacity and how we, you know, develop everyone so that, you know, so it doesn't become necessarily a sequential thing where there's winners and losers, but where everyone is being developed and everyone is playing the role that they can best play for the time, for the work that's ahead of us to get us to the finish line. So I think it's a really thoughtful and innovative suggestion. And I appreciate the chairs, the past chairs' willingness to consider serving longer if that's the direction that we go. That's my two cents.
And to Tom's point, I just want to give credit to Susan Verdicchio because she, as the chair of the select board, had reminded people that there was certainly a time when the select board rotated more frequently than once a year. And that was what first inspired me to even think about that idea, because it was a totally novel idea to me. And I appreciate if she had not reminded folks of that. I don't think there's too many folks who potentially remembered that or recall that. Maybe there are, but I certainly had never heard it from anyone. And so I just want to thank her for kind of keeping that idea alive. Because to Tom's point, I do think it helps any and all boards build more capacity to have those opportunities, so.
And I, to knit then both those comments together, what might come out of a working session on the part of this committee is maybe an understanding about, again, goals, priorities, individual or shared. If there's an opportunity to have, let's say, two vice chairs in a school year, calendar year, or what have you, that actually, that date of when there might be a switch might be more closely tied to a goal, accomplishing something. Whether that's an individual responsibility of the vice chair or a shared goal with someone as well. So I think it's an interesting idea and I think we should talk about that as well.
And I think we'd also have to look at our own policies, because the select board may have policies around that that we don't. And currently, you know, our reorganization policy is only for reorganization following an election.
Yep.
So I think that if we're gonna have time to do something like that, we would, I'm not sure that we could even put an end date on vice chair's tenure today until we make a policy change ourselves. So your idea to keep the chair through Springtown meeting may allow us to make that policy change to allow us to look at different models for this board moving forward, too.
That's right, and that's why I was sort of phrasing it, if Karen would be willing to do it. Because I think as a practical matter, you would have to sort of say, my intention is to step down after Springtown meeting. And in which case, we can elect a chair.
Right, and I think in the spirit of consistency, if that is what the committee is seeking for town meeting, for Springtown meeting, then I'm willing to serve through Springtown meeting. But I would do so only with the understanding that I would step down prior to the first regular meeting following that Springtown meeting.
I think we'd also need to make a commitment, though, as a board, to have the workshop that you're discussing before Springtown meeting as well.
Yeah, agreed.
And I also want to say, Karen, I appreciate you being willing to do it, but I also don't want you to feel like you have to do it because you've already done a lot of great service. So I appreciate Chris's motion, but I want you to know that you certainly don't have to if it's not what you absolutely want to do.
Interesting. So-
And if that's the will of the committee, I'm also happy to withdraw the nomination as chair until after Springtown meeting.
Okay. So by policy, upon election, the new chairperson will preside calling for the election of a vice chairperson. The procedure used for the election will be the same as that used for the electing chairperson. So right now, we have two nominations for chair.
Yep.
We would consider, I think, and I'm more than open to any kind of procedural correction, but I think we would consider the vice chair as a separate vote after calling for nominations for vice chair. So does that sound okay? I mean, it's a little more complicated than I expected. This is what I love this place for.
One foot before the other.
Okay, so then the question back to you, Ms. Bergstrom. Are you, are you with, would you like to stay in the nomination round for voting for chair? Or are you, did you just suggest that you would wait until?
Is there a way to hear from the consensus of the committee that this is a plan that they are interested in?
Continue discussion?
I'll say, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, please, go ahead, Tom.
I like the proposal. Mainly, there's a big part of me that feels that this is a, it's a very awkward process. You know, had our meeting not been pushed out, you know, we would have been having this reorganization days after potentially having new people on the committee. And it seems, it seems putting the thought before the decision makes some sense. And not that there hasn't thought going on all the time, but, you know, but we did just get this committee nine days ago or something to that effect. And I, anyway, I like, I think that there's, I think we have a great group. I think we're doing great work. I think the district is doing a good job. Yeah, everything is good, but I think there's a real opportunity to, you know, focus some of the things that we're doing. And I'm very curious to have that meeting and see where it goes. And hopefully, you know, coming out of that, there's a lot of clarity. And maybe we can explore, you know, the, you know, Mr. Brady's idea as well about, you know, dividing the, I don't know enough about that, you know, I've heard of it. But, you know, put your policy questions, Ms. Bergstrom, you know, I just, I just don't know.
Yeah.
And so having, I don't know how many weeks it is until the end of town meeting, but having an extra six weeks or whatever it is, two or three meetings, you know, seems reasonable to me. So I would be in favor of it.
I would just add that having come in as chair and having to hit town meeting prior as a first-time chair is always a heavy lift. And I would actually encourage this committee to think about always doing reorganization after town meeting, when it's possible. Because I think it is just an awkward time for a new chair to start into, into the role and then to be, to just have to take on that heavy of a lift at the beginning of their term. Whereas when it's available to have a prior chair do that, I think it's, it's just helpful for this committee and for moving our budget forward.
So I think for those, if I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, I think for what, for those reasons and also Mr. Brady's original suggestion, I think one of the things we can talk about in that work session is this idea of reorganization, you know? How should it, when should it happen to be really high functioning? How should it happen?
Just as we move the superintendent evaluation, I think this is something else.
And maybe it's appropriate, given that, and I wish I'd had the crystal ball, I don't know how everybody else feels, but at last year at town meeting, the select board put forward an idea about changing the town election. And the consequence of that, it wasn't that boards are suddenly doing things at the last minute before town meeting. It's just that the boards are running out of runway because we just suddenly shortened the amount of time that we have. So, you know, several things kind of feel different to me in this cycle, but I think we could talk about that as part of a policy discussion. I think that would be good.
And I guess I would just say that I understand what you're saying, that it makes sense if you have the prior chair available and they're able to go into town and you're, the committee's able to go into town meeting with that consistency. But I think there, I can envision some scenarios where there would be an election and then you wouldn't have the prior chair there, so.
Yeah, I think that policy can accommodate for that as well.
So the current policy implies that the election, after the, after the election of officers happens for a period of one year. So whoever you do that, whoever you put in these positions serves for another year until you reorg, again, absent a vacancy, which would be created by someone stepping back or stepping down from the election of chair or vice chair or whatever. So that's the mechanism, as I read it now, that would accomplish pieces of what everyone just talked about. Just so, just to be clear, and looking at the policy and just responding to, you know, it is your policy, so you can do whatever you want to do with it, you know, and that becomes part of the discussion.
I mean, at any time, three members could call for reorganization and vote to do a reorganization. And there's nothing in the policy that says they can't do that.
There's nothing in the policy that prohibits it.
So they could do that. So we don't have to worry about that as much because that's what three people decide they want to do at that point. That's what they're gonna do.
I, yeah, I don't know any different, it's not, it's silent in the policy.
Exactly, so.
So again, we have two nominations. One that is for Ms. Bergstrom, one for Ms. Bolinesse for chair.
I'll respectfully withdraw if this is the will of the committee.
I just, Karen, do you want to do it? That's my main concern.
I am-
I don't know if Chris asked you ahead of time or if he just came up with this idea.
Well, I am-
So I'm trying to help you here, if you don't want to do it.
Well, thank you. I am willing to serve the committee and lead through town, Springtown meeting. But as I said, with the caveat that I would step back from chair position prior to the first town meeting or prior to the first meeting of us after Springtown meeting. And just be a member.
I thought you would have been a little bit more excited about spending a little more time with me, but apparently not, so.
Thank you for being willing to do it.
I hear what you're saying, you're willing to do it.
Yeah.
That was your response to my question, whether you wanted to do it, was you're willing to do it. So I'll leave it at that.
And we, I, I would appreciate your willingness to do it also. Because I think that it does give us time to talk about the plans that Mr. Nixon has suggested and Mr. Brady have suggested tonight. And make sure that we're doing it in a thoughtful way, in a way that supports all the members. But I realize that's an extra burden on you, too, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, I'm just, I want to make sure.
So just because you're a fun group, I'm gonna ask if there are any other nominations for chair? Hearing none.
And we can't nominate you, right?
I am begging you.
Policy's silent on that.
If you jumped out that window, you're only gonna sprain your ankle.
I know, and that is a major problem.
He's broken his ankle before.
Talking about that earlier.
It's not you never know it does, so.
No, this is, this is, this is good fun, this is really good fun. So I will close nominations for chair. And we have one nomination, so with that, I would entertain a vote to have Ms. Bolinesse continue or be chair. And we'd have to be a roll call vote, so.
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Stop off, please. Okay, it's unanimous, thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Bolinesse.
It was a surprise if there ever was one.
Thank you for a few more weeks.
I wish I had that, I have my MMs, but I really don't.
I tried to help you, Karen.
I was gonna say, that's the longest reorg ever, except we're not done.
We're not done.
I tried to make it real quick, so thanks goes to Mr. Nixon.
Okay, I will now accept nominations for vice chair.
She does.
Karen is now in charge. Sorry, Frank, you're done. You're done.
She jumps right back in.
You're done. That was it, you had your time.
Oh, I'm done. God, thank God, this was torturous.
6:51, it was a good run.
I lost consciousness at one point, so now I, I turn the responsibility over to the chair.
So continuing with the reorganization of the school committee, now we have to consider nominations for the vice chair. So I would open it up to nominations for the vice chair.
I'm happy to make one.
Please go ahead, Mr. Nixon.
Do you think it comes with a preamble?
Please grace us with this preamble.
In the interest of our leadership serving through Springtown meeting, I would happily nominate Michelle Bergstrom to serve as vice chair if she's willing to do it. That was a little easier.
With enthusiasm.
And Karen, I would nominate myself to be vice chair with the same caveat that I put forth earlier, that I would like to potentially do it for some limited amount of time, at least. I could say that I would take it on, but my intention would be to make a motion in September or whenever appropriate to reorganize again, to allow someone else to take on the role if they were interested.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, and I guess now-
Discussion.
Follow it, yes. Discussion or acceptance? But I guess, okay. All right. Discussion of the two motions?
I'll just say that I think Mr. Nixon's motion or, is it a motion? Is that what we're doing? Nomination of Ms. Bergstrom is consistent with the prior one. And so not, Mr. Brady not, not saying anything against or for or against the six-month thing, but the way I took the chair discussion was that we would have the discussion about how to do the other part. And so, and this is just a status quo extension for whatever number of weeks it is until we get through Springtown meeting. And so for that reason, I would support Ms. Bergstrom.
And I would only add to that, to say, when that reorganization comes following Springtown meeting, I'm expecting some changes in seats.
We're just gonna switch the two of them, right?
Yeah, right, we'll do this, no. And they will jump out a window, so.
I'll just add that part of my point in structuring it the way I did would allow for two different vice chairs to get experience with town meeting. If we follow the course that Chris has proposed, we will not necessarily have that. So we will lose out on that opportunity. And that was the whole point, was to start to expand and give more people more experience. So as much as I just nominated Michelle for chair, because I know she can do chair, I don't think she needs any more experience as vice chair. And I don't think it would make a material difference whether she were vice chair for Springtown meeting or me. But that would be my perspective on it.
And I would say I would offer the same, how did you word it? I would resign.
Oh, stepping, step down.
Yeah, resign from vice chair.
Right.
Following, prior to the-
Following Springtown meeting, but prior to the first regular meeting of the school committee.
Right. To allow for reorganization at that time.
And I guess this, and I believe with what you're discussing about having a, just a discussion amongst us of what our goals and priorities and workload and expectations are for the committee, then this would also encompass vice chair.
Am I just, am I just to add that I would be willing at the first meeting following town meeting to make a motion that we reorganize the committee, which I think might be slightly better procedurally than having both of our officers quitting at that time? Because there may not be-
Because then this person is in charge.
You want that again?
I mean, I think that happens either way.
Then there would be three of us, which is, I mean, I think there'd be five of us. I think that's the intention, if we go this path, is to do a reorganization. But it just strikes me as better than having two vacancies at that time.
I just, I'm sorry, I just didn't hear the very ending of that. It strikes you.
So both of your, your acceptances came with the fact that you would each resign after that, at that meeting. And if you both resigned and we didn't reorganize, then, you know, Frank would be leaving us, and we don't want that. Just kidding. And so I was just, I was just offering that, I think that as a group, we could, you know, I would be willing to be the third person to say, let's reorganize, and then we have this formal discussion, et cetera. It's just a procedural.
And just as a practical matter, if the committee is, if we move forward on the motion on the table for Michelle, then it frankly just becomes a future agenda item, that our next regularly scheduled meeting following the conclusion of Springtown meeting begins with a reorganization. That's, that's an agenda item. You know? So.
That works, too?
Okay. I feel lots of ahs. Okay, so we could move forward with-
A vote.
With a vote?
Yep.
Okay. So we're keeping both nominations on the table, and we move forward with a vote? Okay. All right, so, okay, I will start from the left.
You clarify, clarify, what's the vote?
So you're gonna, you're gonna ask for votes for each of the two nominations?
Yes, so-
So you have to do one person, then the other.
Yeah, and you do Michelle, because she was nominated first.
Okay. So I would accept a vote for the vice chair considering Michelle Bergstrom as one of, as the nomination at hand.
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Yeah.
Abstain.
Doesn't sound like a vote of confidence.
You could also define.
Nays? Do I have to do nays? Okay, and then for Mr. Brady? Would, it's, now we will consider the nomination of Mr. Brady for vice chair.
What was the vote on the last one? I just, I heard three yeses, one abstaining, I didn't hear if there was another vote.
No, I was abstaining on it.
You're abstaining?
All right, I missed that.
Okay, so then it is a, it is three yays, no nays, and two abstentions. Okay. So now we will move on with the nomination of Mr. Brady for vice chair. And a vote on that?
Starts with Mr. Nixon again.
I was gonna say.
Go ahead.
Can I just ask again?
Yes.
I'm trying to understand procedurally how to do this. Like, if, if both are voted, if both get a majority, then how do you, do you break it? Like, I feel like we just elected Ms. Bergstrom, and so.
I agree. Three of us just voted for Michelle. Can only have one vice chair. But if we want to go through with the motions and vote for Seamus, we can do that.
You would need to, because it could be tied.
I think we'd need to.
Yeah, you need to. So go ahead. It's your vote, Chris.
You could start all over again.
Okay. So I vote no.
Okay. Mr., Mr. Hopcroft?
Yeah, I vote no, but I guess I can only say yes or no, but, but not, because of the prior discussion.
Yeah.
Mr., Mr. Brady?
You have to vote yes for yourself.
Yes.
Just like I couldn't vote against the person I just nominated for chair, that would look kinda silly.
Right. Ms. Bergstrom?
I'm going to abstain.
And I am going to abstain. Okay. So, let's see, so, okay, now I have to count this up again.
One yes, two nos, two abstentions.
Thank you.
Double checking our work.
Abstentions always make me, make me a little, okay. So yes, so between the two votes, then miss, the vote goes to Ms. Bergstrom for this particular point.
And I would just like to offer to you, Mr. Brady, that if there is any involvement you would like to have in town meeting, we can certainly involve you in that process to the extent that you would like to be involved.
I appreciate that.
As, there's nothing magic about being vice chair.
No, I, I wouldn't imagine.
I would hope not.
She makes it look magical, but.
I would hope not.
So if there is an invol- a level of involvement you'd like to have in town meeting, I would welcome that involvement, and I'm sure Ms. Bolanese would as well.
I'm happy to.
Committee effort.
The other committee members. Unlike select board, school committee only usually has one or two presenters at town meeting, at the most. I mean, I believe, you know, Ms. Bolanese will present as chair, Mr. Nixon may present on behalf of the EFPVC, but unlike the select board, we don't really have that opportunity to do a lot of presentation at town meetings, so.
Yeah, I don't have a particular desire to present at town meeting.
Okay. But, but we are happy to have your, your involvement in that.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Okay.
So I have a point of order, if I can make one very quickly, so thank you to Dr. Hackett for kicking off the meeting. I don't think we did an agenda rundown.
No, we did not.
But it's very long, and it would certainly take a long time.
I was about to get there.
High school reps are here, Mr. Nardone is here, and if there's nobody, nobody, no special guests to address the SEEM items on the agenda, can I ask that, after we hear from our student reps, could we jump to the Lynch Phasing and Logistics meeting summary? Because that way, those folks can sort of come and go, and we can make the most of Jay's time while he's here, and just push the SEEM stuff later.
Yeah, push it to.
I'm asking if that would be okay.
Can, can I ask just a quick question to you to follow up on that? Is there a lot to present on SEEM, or is it just letting us know that we have the materials and we can move on?
It would be just that, unless there are questions.
Okay.
And the Lynch Phasing and Logistics would tie in well with the, well, B specifically, with Mr. Nardone.
It would tie in well with.
Okay.
With the A.
With, oh, okay.
And, and the elementary mathematics updates, just to, just to let you know that they are in your packet, the education subcommittee heard from the math team.
Okay.
So it's, it's pleasure of the chair. Let me.
Okay, I retract it.
Okay.
Never mind.
All right, so.
You better not ask any questions about the SEEM stuff.
Oh, no. Okay, so with that, I will run through the schedule for this evening. So we just had our reorganization. Student representatives' report comes next, followed by communications from the school committee and the administration. SEEM collaborative annual report, annual budget, budget highlights, then followed by the Lynch Phasing and the Logistics Task Force meeting, then followed by public comment, reports and discussion items, including the update on Morocco, Lincoln, and McCall building projects, a report back from the EFPVC chair on the Lynch project regarding logistics and swing space, update on world languages, student interest survey, proposal to change the pay for substitute nurses, a review of the summer programming proposal by Kidsborough, the distribution and overview of the formative evaluation of the interim superintendent, and then followed by action items, consideration of acceptance and approval of gifts and grants totaling $23,944.59, including $745 of WIFI grants, a donation from Min Hu to the Winchester High School, $500 for the postgraduate program at WHS, community health grant from Winchester Hospital to WHS, and then a grant from the John and Mary Murphy Educational Foundation to the Winchester High School, and consideration of approval of several minutes. Chair report, interim superintendent report, next meetings, and adjournment. So with that, I would come back at last to our student representative report, and I would just like to welcome to the table L. O'Connor and Charlie Savage, our 11th graders from the high school, from the student council.
And thank you for your patience tonight.
Of course.
Of course. Thank you guys so much for having us.
Yeah, thank you, guys. We are so excited to be back, and we also just wanted to extend our congratulations to Ms. Bolanese and Mr. Nixon on your reelections. So to kick us off, we just want to also give a huge congratulations to the Winchester Model UN team for placing first at this year's National High School Model UN Conference, and this team faced competition from participants all across the world in a four-day in-person conference at the New York Hilton Midtown, and they also received the award of distinction for the second year in a row. The 10th graders have their first class dance this Friday from 7:00 to 9:30 p.m. at the high school, and they'll be having a red carpet theme. The student council is hosting a shoe drive through the J.C. Hispaniola Fund from March 28th to April 5th. All shoes are appreciated, but gently worn sneakers or other durable shoes of any size are preferred. The collection box is also currently outside the main office at the high school. And then, so members from the J.C. Hispaniola Fund will hand deliver all these shoes that these collect to various communities of the Dominican Republic, and they also help these villages in other ways through educational services, dental care, and more. Two of the members of this nonprofit organization are WHS alumni Abby and David Joseph, so we hope you all consider donating, and if you are interested in learning more about this organization, you can visit their website at JCHispaniola.org. And one of the 11th graders at the high school, Ellen Stewart, is also hosting a drive, but this is for dance equipment, and it will continue until this Friday, April 1st. She is collecting new or gently used dance wear to donate to dancers at Boston Dance Alliance Fall River RE Creation in Berkshire Pulse. Leotards, costumes, dance shoes, and new tights of all sizes are greatly appreciated, and there's also a bin outside of the main office for this as well. The Class of 2023's parents are hosting their annual musical bingo on Friday, April 8th, at the Sons of Italy. They are currently sold out, but if anyone still wants to take it, we might be able to help with that. This is just a great fundraiser to help set, offset the Class of 2023's Senior Week festivities. And then along with that, Miss Paradise's mentor program training started today. So earlier this year, our current 11th and 12th graders became mentors for the 9th graders, and this involved just a couple of meetings during wind block to help them get adjusted to the high school, learn new study habits, and things like that. But to prepare for next year, the current 10th and 11th graders have begun their formalized training with Corey Mashburn, and for next year, there will be 75 mentors. And we just think that this is a great opportunity for upperclassmen to meet the underclassmen, for students to get involved, and have the chance to volunteer, for the underclassmen to be able to talk and relate with other kids and learn some of the strategies that they've learned through their years at the high school, and also just for underclassmen to see a friendly face when they're walking the halls as they join the WHS community.
All right. Again, thank you so much for having us tonight. Feel like it's been forever, but I know you guys have been extremely busy, and we do really appreciate being here. I won't delay us any longer, so let's just jump right into it. Um, the English MCAS was held last week for underclassmen, and spring sports have officially started as of yesterday. Uh, we're excited to see crowds outside again as it begins to warm up, and I'm sure everything will be very lively like we saw in the fall and winter. Also, as the spring continues to move forwards, we're quickly approaching quarter four. Uh, this means internships for many of our seniors. I mean, there are around 50 seniors already signed up for internship, uh, internships with jobs ranging from working in real estate to healthcare to K-35 teaching, uh, which is really exciting, because we love to get to watch our seniors kind of get a taste of the workforce. Uh, internships definitely are the only thing seniors are excited for, as the warm weather means graduation and prom soon. This year, prom is going to be held under the tent at Skilling's, like it has in the past, which will allow students to bring guests and gives us lots of rooms for food trucks and games. Prom will be held on June 1st, while graduation will be held on June 3rd on Manchester Field.
And for part of tonight's focus question, we will be giving you guys a recap on the high school's spring musical, which was Anything Goes. There was three performances on March 18th, 19th, and 20th with great performances, and each performance did sell out, and they received standing ovations, so it was just really amazing to get to see these performances, and you could really tell how hard each individual worked to put it all together leading up to the event. All of the small details in this musical really just put their performance over the top, and we were so excited to get to see our classmates really be on stage and get to show everyone their talents, so it was just really a great experience overall.
All right, moving on to the second focus for tonight, uh, which was unmasking. As you all know, we've started optional masking as of March 14th. From both students and admins' point of view, it has been going very well. On the staff side, there haven't really been any complaints nor problems reported, which is a very good thing. You know, no news is good news. And there also hasn't been any reported cases of disrespect from students who choose, from students to those who choose to continue wearing their mask. It's been stressed multiple times that no student should ask or is required to answer why they choose to continue wearing a mask. We will definitely continue to monitor cases and student opinion, and we're planning to put a survey together to get a broader, more unbiased opinion from students on demasking. That concludes our topics for tonight. Please feel free to ask any questions, and as always, it's a pleasure being here.
I just wanted to thank you both. I had the pleasure of attending putting for patients. I don't know if anyone else was able to attend, but I went with my five-year-old, and he just thought it was wonderful, um, so I just want to appreciate all your work on that event. I thought it was very well-run, and it was just, from what I could see, a great success. So thank you both, and to all the other students who volunteered, and the staff who volunteered as well. It was a really nice event, and nice way to spend some of that Saturday, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The gym fund is, yeah, always such a huge help with that. They always bring in all the equipment, so it's really great.
It's a really cool event.
I have a couple of things. So this was a first for us. We had a, a, a full-throated sort of municipal election at the high school on a Saturday, um, and so the gym was fully occupied. It was busy throughout the day. I'm curious to know, how did that impact your Friday at all? Did you guys have use of the gym? Were they, were they setting all that up, like when school was over, as far as you were concerned, as a student, didn't have any impact?
Um. As a junior, luckily, we don't have to take gym. Not luckily. We don't have to, we don't have to take gym.
Yeah, I didn't personally see anything. But we did, we had the chance to have bake sales throughout the day during the election, so it was really great for all of the classes and student council.
Everything was moving very smoothly, which was really nice to see, you know, everybody's rotating through, and it seemed like.
Yeah.
They're making sure not too many massive crowds.
And, well, there were some students, as you know, who were also there, kind of with some signs to help people find the way, especially along the ADA route, so that was nice, and I, I heard from people who were just happy to go into the building and not know where to go, and be greeted by a smiling Winchester High School student to say this way, that way, and so forth. On the subject of masking, um, there's, there's been a message sent out by Mr. Lynn recently, just reminding parents, you know, not to, as a general rule, don't send your kid to school when they're sick. And so I'm just curious, like, anecdotally, um, I'm not gonna ask you how many kids are wearing masks, how many aren't. Um, do you feel like kids are generally come to school because they, they're healthy, they feel healthy, or we don't have a problem with kids coming to school who are visibly sick, I hope? Good.
Yeah.
I'm seeing Charlie say no.
I've not seen anybody visibly sick yet, you know, and then you, you still have a solid proportion of people wearing their masks. It was more than I expected, to be honest, but I think it's kind of changed a little bit as the weeks continue. But so far, it seems like everything's going really smoothly. No extraordinary cases, you know, to my knowledge. It seems like it's going pretty good.
And with the weather warming up, you guys, I, I don't, I'm assuming you can go outside for lunch even when it's cold, right?
Yes.
But now that it's warming up, students will be more likely to go outside if they feel like they can, right? Okay, thank you.
Anecdotally, Mr. Nixon, my 10th grader had his PE rescheduled on Friday. Easy enough to do.
Got it.
No complaints.
Got it.
I was just wondering, um, when, or the, you had mentioned the mentor training, which I remember you had talked about the mentors earlier this school year, and I thought that was just a great program and opportunity for the, for the older students to help the younger students and those who are transitioning into the school. I think that's marvelous. And with the training, is that, does that occur during wind block, or is it before or after school, or?
Yes, so today we had, it was the first training. It was on healthy relationships with Corey Mashburn, and this was the first training, and we will have another training next week, um, I believe March 26th is, oh, wait.
Nope.
April 6th, yes. And then we will have two other meetings later in the year to practice, like, presenting and the things that we would do as a mentor.
These pretty much always take place during wind block.
Yeah.
Oh, during wind block. Oh, that's great. That's great. That gives everybody a chance. So, and I, I think I saw some of the topics in the W, in the high school PFA newsletter, and I thought that was great, that it was setting up the kids and the mentors to be able to have, or just to be ready for talks with the, with their mentees, so I think that's great.
Whole wind block system has, like, really got into a swing now, like.
Yeah.
Third quarter, like, you got clubs, and everything's running way smoother. At the beginning of the year, we had some hiccups.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And then, just a congratulations on the musical. I went all three nights, because it was, it was just marvelous, and it, and I still have the music going through my head. It was lovely just to see the kids together, um, and the audience, and to hear the music and the pit orchestra, so I just love the participation on, by, on all ends, so.
I did have one more question.
Yes, Mr. Nixon.
So we, we used to have colleges and universities would come to Winchester High School, sometimes do a little dog and pony show, you know, in the guidance office, um, which is really helpful for students. That obviously wasn't happening much during COVID, um, and a lot of colleges and universities still have kind of curtailed their admissions activity. Are, are those kind of coming back right now, and are they?
Been there all year.
What's that?
Been there all year.
Well, but in terms of, like, the number of schools that are coming, and, and students feel like they have access to these folks that are coming, they can ask questions, that we're not, like, space limited in any way?
I think it seems so. I mean, we're seeing this every morning in announcements, like, one of the first things they have is the list of colleges that will be here this week, and I think that students are definitely making an effort to connect more as, like,
Good.
you know, juniors are approaching their applications.
And it's also usually held during wind block, so it's just very convenient for students to sign up for that as well.
Good, okay, I'm glad.
And the seniors had access to that all this year, too.
Yeah.
Like, the current seniors.
Well, I'm especially glad, because more and more schools, because of the sudden sharp increase in applications that they're seeing across the country, more and more schools are actually saying, we don't have the bandwidth to even interview kids anymore. So it's a great opportunity for FaceTime between a student and a representative of the admissions office. So I'm, I'm really happy that that's back again. Thanks.
Of course.
Yes, Mr. Hopcroft.
I'll just say, I really appreciate you guys coming here, you know, for each meeting and giving us the updates. It's really great. And I just wanted to throw a plug out there, because I, I heard Charlie, you talk about a number of different industries that people are looking for internships and jobs in, and to say, you know, Massachusetts is number one in innovation, consistently ranked, and tech jobs pay twice the state average, and we have a huge, thriving tech economy that's pushing many other segments, so tell your friends, you know, also look at tech internships. There's lots of them, so. But thank you.
Of course. Of course.
And I'll just put in a, a plug for, there are so many things going on at the high school. It's amazing. So, and I think even at all levels of the schools in Winchester, it just seems like things are ramping up through as the weather turns warmer, although today is not reflective of that. So, um, and, oh, and in the, in the line, in the vein of plugs, I'll put in a plug for the National History Day. Um, because I think there, the state competition is coming up in early April, so I think there are a number of representatives from Winchester High School. Go red and black.
And because I wouldn't want us to not mention it, I also went to the art show, um, which was another nice evening. And I really appreciated the student work that I was able to see there. I couldn't stay for the whole thing. Uh, younger people in my household felt it was time for bed, but, um, what we did see was very impressive, especially the visual arts that were on display there. So, um, just congratulations to all the students who were a part of that. And again, another, another nice event for the community.
Thank you.
So amazing work. We're so proud of you all.
See, you don't come for wine, then we have so much to talk about.
And another thing, the musical was excellent. It was really good.
I still have the song stuck in my head, like the first one.
And Royals was back.
Yeah, that was really great too.
Yes.
So Levine, I don't know if you want to, is there anything you want to just quickly fill out on? Because a couple of those topics that were touched were directly related to you, so.
Sure, sure. Um, the, um, uh, the, uh, presentations that began today with, uh, Corey Mashburn, who's a prevention specialist. Um, um, I'm going to focus specifically on healthy relationships, as I mentioned, and substance, substance abuse prevention. Uh, and then the third component will be, um, uh, men- mental health. Um, and so those, those three workshops will be, um, working with, uh, with the mentors and the, and the mentor teachers uh, to, um, develop, develop workshops for the ninth grade mentees for next year. Um, as those are specific target areas that came out of our eighth rest of the year survey.
Nice.
And the funding for that is?
Came directly from the Winchester, the, uh, Winchester Hospital grant, um, as well as, um, as well as with.
Right, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next time, maybe the winter coats and layers, you would be, you know, a little warmer.
Hopefully, rain shorts and T-shirts.
That's right.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night. Good to see you.
Thanks for coming.
Bye.
Okay, and let me see, with that, we will move on to communications from the school committee. Um, Dr. Hackett, I believe you said that SEEM collaborative reports?
Yes, so as promised, um, the SEEM collaborative report, uh, really is, it's in your packet. It's been previously distributed, so uh, I did ask Mr. Rowe to take a look at the, uh, at all of them. Um, and if you have any particular comments or?
Uh, no, and the, um, it, it does appear to be, um, as you'd expect, um, collaborative's report that, um, with projections that look to be in sound financial shape, you know, going forward and as members, I think, um, you can be comfortable that that's a thing that's lots of sense. Uh, and is it, and one thing I would just observe, it's interesting to see how the, um, full rollout of the O P A B future liabilities really does weigh as a consideration on, on all these organizations. You know, once upon a time, you, you would have seen that, but it's a significant, you know, sort of future liability.
So just for the audience purpose, can you just explain what that means?
Oh, it, it's other post-employment benefits. And what that really means is it's the future health insurance cost of, um, employees. And that's based on a, you know, going forward, but and generally, those weren't the kind of liabilities that have been booked in, in the past, but given their implication for future costs, they now give themselves credit. So when you look at, um, future liabilities, you'll see those in the, in the, in the.
I only had one quick question about it, Dr. Hackett, but I can follow up with you later. It looked like SEEM collaboratives were projecting their enrollment was going down next year? Was I reading that correctly? And if so, I'd just be curious to understand why, because it seems like everybody's out of district placements are up. So I, that was one place I was just curious why their enrollment was going down, but I can follow up.
Okay, all right, yeah, I'd have to take a look at it.
Well, it's an F Y twenty-one report, not F Y twenty-two, so I think they're talking, where they're talking about.
Still think it's interesting.
I, I was assuming we're seeing an F Y twenty-one report because it has been audited. Right? So I think when they say next year, they're actually talking about this year.
I know, that's why I'm still finding it surprising.
I, I was assuming it's the audit that sort of drags that.
But even F Y twenty-one, I would expect the enrollment to be up. And I do know that they are, they do have space limitations and they're having a hard time expanding programming, so that might be part of it as well, so.
Yeah, just curious.
And, and my only question that I don't expect you're going to have an answer for, but you know, every community across Massachusetts is school committees and districts, right, are posturing for ARPA funds in conversations with select boards and finance committees. And I wonder about groups like SEEM because they're member communities. So how does SEEM fight for ARPA funding? Um, I don't, I don't know that that really happens. I mean, I, I can appreciate how if every community, you know, brought something forward to SEEM, it would be a shared benefit. But, you know, we, I think our natural disposition is to, we think about this district, this school committee, right? We think about our team and what we need, so.
That's a good question. And even when ARPA was opened up originally in town and the rules were different, obviously, then, and there were a lot of organizations that were able to apply for it. I've not heard, that's a really good question. I've not heard anywhere any collaboratives actually applying for ARPA funding, but I don't know, I don't know what would prevent them from doing it if they are an organization within a community.
I mean, my only suggestion would be if there's something that the, the board feels strongly about at SEEM that you think is ARPA suitable, is that something you guys as a shared lift among, you know, you, you're all superintendents, you represent your districts.
That's why we don't want them having the money, so. Sitting there with Winchester hat on, not with the SEEM hat on.
Yeah, but you know, I, I'm just trying to say, we, we.
Do they get E S R, Dr. Hackett?
I don't think they got E S R directly, no. I do, I don't believe so.
So not that either?
No, no. I mean, they technically benefited indirectly from districts getting those funds and it is a bit of a growth industry, right now, to your earlier point about confused a little bit about the enrollment report, because we are definitely seeing more referrals that, and some of which, as we've talked about, have gone to, leading to placements in collaboratives.
Right.
So it seems to me they are, they should be, they, they would be an eligible organization. The challenge is
How to do it.
How do they, how do they, how do they advocate for themselves and to whom? Because if they were successful, it would certainly benefit Winchester kids who are referred to the collaborative. That's all.
Okay, just, um, moving on. If anyone's upset, okay. Uh, and again, I just, I did put the, just recently in, in your packet, the, uh, the education subcommittee met um, and on the second and talked about both elementary and secondary mathematics. Um, so it is in your, it is in your folder, um, both these presentations, and I don't know whether
It's on the.
Dr. Ellen Emma or, uh, members of the education subcommittee want to speak to it in all and any kind of ways.
Why is that on the agenda?
It was, it's on your live agenda, is that?
Yeah, it's on the live agenda. I just, I'm providing it as a communication, that's all.
Oh, okay.
Where is it though?
It should be in the folder.
It's not showing up on our.
I'm not saying it.
Okay, all right, so I'll make sure it's in the folder for you, but, um, I don't know whether or not.
I don't know why it's not showing up on ours.
Comments or highlights from the, these presentations from the education subcommittee or?
Um, I, I feel like, yeah. Um, so we heard both from Sandy Manugian, who is the six twelve math coordinator. And we also heard from Julie McElhany Gorman, who is the elementary math coordinator, who both, um, shared with us, um, the growth in the math programs and, um, the way that they are looking at math, K twelve, and the progression of skills and, um, the idea of learning and building those skills at elementary school and bringing them up to the six twelve level. Um, we talked a little bit, um, let me go backwards because we actually, um, we actually started at six twelve, but, um, at the elementary level, um, um, Julie talked about the work that they're doing around looking at like essential questions in mathematics and, um, a de-emphasis sort of on, um, the traditional memorization skills, but building facts and fluency through actual, the actual practice of mathematics. Um, she had just come back from the conference for Joe Bowler, um, which really looks at, um, she looks a lot at problem solving in mathematics and thinking skills about mathematics and teaching kids to think of themselves as, as mathematicians. Um, they both had, and those presentations should show, um, some pretty great work that they are doing in the classrooms with, um, real-life problems for kids to solve around, um, around mathematics and making, making the math sort of come to life for the kids and not just doing mathematics in isolation, but actually in practice. Um, they are building mathematical libraries at the elementary schools that have, um, math manipulatives that, and math games so that, um, kids can actually do more of the hands-on math and visualizing math in some really interesting ways. Um, they are using Cuisinere rods, which are these, um, really neat mathematical manipulative tools that, um, they're, they're not the traditional unit blocks that you might have seen the kids use where you build them together, but they come pre-built in zero to, is it base ten, right, Jen? Zero to ten, um, lengths and, um, using those to actually visualize and solve problems and look at volumes of, um, objects. Um, and she also talked a lot about how the common planning time has been incredibly useful at the elementary school to have discussions across the grade three level throughout the district, um, within grade three teams and her ability to be able to go into classrooms and have herself and coaches work actually with students and kids in classrooms modeling lessons and, um, modeling the language that teachers can use around, um, having kids be able to come up with solutions to problems themselves and then share out those problems and solutions in the class and be able to put those up on the board and talk about what's efficient and what's, um, what's accurate about the different strategies that kids are using instead of it just being a teacher-driven, here's how you solve a problem. So all of that was really exciting and that built up to, um, Ms. Manugian at the six twelve level. Um, I had asked her about STAG and how STAG was going. It's been a number of years since our implementation of that. And, um, the, she indicated that the staff and the students are really excited about that. They STAG stands for Statistics, Trigonometry, Algebra, and Geometry that.
Was it like, but two, when you say a number of years, it's like two, maybe three, right? It's a fairly new-ish thing.
Fairly new-ish.
Yeah, okay.
Is this third year of implementation?
It's at lea- again, no time and space after the pandemic.
I know, that's what I mean too.
It was at least a year before.
The pandemic, yeah.
Can I just ask a quick point of order? Sorry, I'm, I love this. I'm happy to hear this. I'm not seeing this anywhere on any of our agendas that we posted.
So it's a communication from the administration, so I didn't expect, I'm not expecting to be a full presentation. So, I mean, the detail is, is great, but I wanted you to know that the education subcommittee did meet. Uh, that was posted and, uh, this, these are the presentations that came out of that. Um, I didn't expect, I don't expect any kind of full presentation, but with that, I, what I will say, uh, and further on in the agenda, um, when we, when, with my formative assessment, I, I want to, not necessarily bring you back, but one of the things we want to talk about is the level of work that's happening, not just in the math department, but across all content areas, is not, is not only high quality, but it's also pretty sophisticated. Um, and the way that we're thinking about student assessment, um, and you can see on here and talking about, uh, refining, the, uh, developing and founding P V As, alternative assessments, uh, and also grading for equity and status-based grading strategies. I would, I would like to, um, over the next, or we would like to over the next several meetings, have, uh, some presentations from staff actually as part of our meeting, uh, get our, and, and really be able to, for you to hear specifically from the people that are doing the work, what they're doing around assessment and how we're, how we're looking at student performance. So, uh, I apologize that, you know, I I was just intending this to be a communication, um, item, and so I should have been a little bit more clear about that, so. Um, but I'll make sure that you do have the link. I, I see Mr. Brady is on here, so I, I think all of you should have uh, the folder for, for where this is, but I will send it back out again, so.
And I'm happy to continue stuff, but just sharing what we talked about.
Okay, all right.
Should I continue? It's up to.
Communication.
I'm happy to hear it. I'm just more concerned with others who might say, well, that wasn't on your agenda and now you're talking about it and why are you talking about it if it wasn't on your agenda?
Sure, it's not an action item, it's a communication, so I, I understand that. We can, um, we can bring it back and put it on the agenda a bit more formally, sure.
Yes, we want a more fulsome discussion on it.
Yeah.
I mean, but I think it's totally fine when you, you later on in the agenda, if you want to circle back to something, you bring it up as an exhibit, you can certainly do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then I think we should come back to this too at another school committee meeting too, because it sounds like there's a lot of good stuff.
There's a lot of good stuff going on. Okay, thank you. Uh, so Lynch Phasing Logistics Task Force meeting, we, uh, did have, uh, a meeting.
Can we ask Jay to join us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Nardone.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I did present this to E F P B C.
We are bringing in Mr. Nardone, Mr. Gerald Nardone from the E F P B C.
Thank you.
So I did present this, the E F P B C, the, we had a, uh, this task force came together on March twenty-ninth. Um, I can just, for background information.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth, thank you. Uh, today's the twenty-ninth. It just seemed like it was today.
That's true.
We had good representation from both, from parents and from teachers, uh, really good discussion around the project. Uh, Charlie Hay from Tepe, uh, presented the, uh, what you have seen, which basically what you saw last time at the last meeting was around the phasing of the project and the challenges of the site. Uh, we had, got, um, Mr. Hopcroft was present as well. We had, uh, good discussion around what the challenges of that will be. Um, and, um, I was surprised to, to, to hear how fairly quickly the group began to come to consensus around maybe getting all the kids off the site would be the right thing to do. Um, and, you know, we talked about that, or you talked about that at your last school committee meeting, when you see that fence line running right through the middle of the playground, uh, was when, you know, your discussion and then subsequently your, uh, your, uh, your request to me that we try to figure out what that might look like as part of the, as part of the project, if we were able to get all, all the students off site, so. Um, so they really got there fairly, fairly quickly. Obviously, more conversations about grade levels and how would it accomplish that, and we don't yet know entirely whether we, what I, we do know that all of Lynch with pre-K or preschool still here would not work. So the question then becomes, you know, how many modulators and other, other options for spaces within the district? Um, specifically for maybe a pre-K or a grade level, uh, to think about, and that's the work that we're doing right now. Um, so, uh, they, the group, um, which was unusual, they don't want to meet again. Um, they didn't want to meet again until after the, after the, um, uh, town meeting because they know, then, we talked about what's on the town meeting docket and what the options are, or the articles that are on the town meeting docket, um, and they felt that it would be time better spent if they waited to see the results of that, and then we'll bring them back together again depending on what direction, um, the town meeting, um, chooses. Um, and, and, you know, and also with, with the school committee, um, depending on where that all goes. So, uh, again, good group, good discussion. Um, it was also just great to have teachers and parents there to hear and see the presentation from, from Charlie. Um, it just makes it more real for people, I think. Um, and, you know, I think they're starting to generate some excitement, understanding that we, we do have some logistical challenges ahead of us, so I'm happy to answer any questions and.
Can I interject one important point too? So Tom and I were there along with Deb DePeter and Lisa Matrindola. Um, we were really there as, we're the part of our, that Lynch communications group. So for us, it's, it's helpful to hear what Charlie is saying and to kind of read the audience, to be sure that parents and teachers are hearing what we think the message is and to react quickly if we feel like we need to kind of tighten up the messaging and we're not being clear. And it's also, we, we definitely want to hear back from the parent community, uh, if they're asking questions about things that we thought we just explained. So it, it's, it's beginning to get real for us too. Um, I, I thought the group was very constructive, Dr. Hackett. Um, they asked some really good questions about, um, so naturally, some questions went to, well, if you have to move, if you don't move everybody off and you, and you only move the two or three grade levels, you know, who would that be? So you sort of knew that question would come. And I think you did a good job sort of saying, well, we don't have that figured out yet, but there's lots of, you know, different options, um, around that.
Is the, is the, um, group communicating at all with the larger, wider Lynch community?
So short answer is no, not formally, um, but that, that question did come up. Um, and our intent will be, once we get a little bit more firm on what the plans could look like and give a few more answers. and give a few more answers, then we'll, we would do open parent meetings and staff meetings as well. And I mean, that process is going to happen naturally anyway because we start getting further into the design process. That's when we're going to want teacher input and parent input because it's going to get, you know, really down to, more specifically to what the classrooms are going to look like, what the entryway is going to look like as we move on through the MSBA process.
And we've talked about at the EFPPC table, tying this back to our experience on VO. So once the MSBA will be voting, April 27th, I think it is, the board will be voting on our preferred option. Once that happens, now we're going to take what is really just a concept plan that you guys have seen and then really turn it into schematic design. So that's really when we started having community meetings, for instance, at VO and said, you know, this is what it looks like and these are the direct, because you can still, if you, if you look at where we were at VO with the scheme that actually got built up on the hill, if you squint, they look pretty similar. But if you don't squint, they're also kind of very different. So there's a lot of design work yet to be done. So we've talked about, you know, having some community meetings at Lynch, you know, in person. But we kind of have to get through this PSR phase with the MSBA.
Probably a good moment to throw a plug for Lynch2025.com.
It's always a good time to throw a plug.
Anyone who's curious to, you know, the, the site's been kept well up to date with the latest plans and presentations and timelines and all that stuff. So if you don't want to wait for those meetings, you can check it out there. Lynch2025.com.
And we work very hard, at least sometimes every week, sometimes every couple of weeks, but often every week to update the presentations page. So if you want to watch EFPPC meetings, you can click the video link. If you just want to scroll through Charlie's PowerPoints, those are there as well. So that page, you know, continues to grow. It's all there.
Are you getting any questions? Are you continuing, or no?
We haven't, well, so we're getting questions, not necessarily through the FAQ email, not too much yet, but we've gotten some. But we seize every opportunity to actually show people. We actually did that at the end of this task force group that Dr. Hackett set up. We said, do you guys know about the website? And most people, I think, said, oh, yeah, yeah, we know, we know about the website. We said, okay, you know about the FAQ page and this is the email you can use. Yeah, yeah, no, it's all good. So maybe that means we're just doing a good job sort of pushing information out, but maybe not. I don't know. We just, we keep reminding people.
Yeah, I was just curious.
But we know it works because we did, we've gotten a couple of good questions.
Right.
And they will, they will come, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think especially as the, more of the information on the design goes out and people can see it and visualize it like this small group here, I think you will get a lot more questions and input from the community.
Yep, for sure.
I think Dr. Hackett said, said it well when he said that, you know, it started to get real. And I think as it gets real for people, you know, we'll hear a lot more because it's, it's a real situation there.
So I know Dr. Hackett had to step away for a minute. We have this public comment on the agenda.
Yes.
And then we're like formally talking to Jay. So.
Right, okay.
Just one other communication, just a reminder for folks to register for kindergarten. I, myself and my family were guilty of being a little late, but our registration is in and it's okay if your registration is late. It's never too late.
Never too late.
So if you're working on your registration, get it in. If you haven't started, come down and get it and get it filled out. It's available. If you need it, reach out to the central office. The more folks we have registered for kindergarten, the earlier it is advantageous. So if you haven't done it yet, please do it. There's going to be an upcoming opportunity to go to your prospective school with your student or family. So that's coming up in a few weeks. So that's another reason to register now. So I would just encourage everyone to do that. And if you have questions, just reach out to the central office.
Thank you. That's great. I was just going to add to that, that the kindergarten orientation will be April 29th.
Twenty-ninth.
Yes. And the only other community item that I thought was, that I had on my radar was April 11th, there's going to be a vaccination clinic in town. So please check your newsletters and the town website for registration opportunities. And with that, pending no other communications, then we can move on to public comment. As I understand it, we do not have any remote public comment registration.
We don't.
And I believe we do not have any public comment people in person. So I would be happy to not read the little preamble for public comment and just move on.
I will note that we did receive a public comment via email prior to the meeting.
That is true.
It was in my junk mail. So just for other members, you may want to check your junk mail and.
That is true.
Find that public comment as well.
Or if you don't find it, Dr. Hackett can forward.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Yep.
We had one public comment email from Brian Vernalia. So we will add, make sure that that is added into the public record with Aaron.
All right, just, just speaking on that note, because things have been going to spam for, or junk mail. We, we did, I hope everyone received the petition from one of our eighth grade students. So hopefully people saw that.
Thanks.
And then we also had a letter from a third grade student that we got today. So just checking that everyone got all those things. Excellent.
Okay.
I will just share this quickly, bringing it up because it is related to part of the next conversation. But this is one of the letters that was, emails that was sent to the committee and with respect to.
Sent to the EFPPC.
The Lynch Project was also sent to the committee.
Oh, okay.
It ended up being your junk mail. But that was.
Oh, okay.
Or I was asked to, maybe it wasn't. I was asked to bring it to.
Yeah, I don't think this came to us.
I was going to say, I haven't seen this one.
So I understand the school committee meeting tomorrow night. And this individual wanted this on record. So.
I think that, so this was sent to the EFPPC during the meeting.
I received it also last night.
Yeah, so this was a parent who just didn't know how to reach out to the EFPPC. So Jay will be sure to forward this to the EFPP, well, you did.
I did.
You shared that earlier.
Can you leave it up just so we can read it for a minute?
Sure.
Or just forward it to us, Dr. Hackett also?
I mean, it's being shared. You could, you could forward this to the school committee.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. So moving right along, we will move into our reports and discussion items, beginning with the memo from Mr. Nixon.
This will take two minutes. And Jay will find some of this interesting, I'm sure. So the Morocco Elementary School Life Extension Plan funded through ballot question one last spring. So we're moving forward with the roof replacement this summer. The construction documents are done. The bids are coming in. There'll be some limited masonry repair at Morocco. The other big element of that is replacing the electrical gear. But out of concern that it wouldn't be, I mean, for, for that project to work, you have to completely de-energize the building and you need, you need the full summer to do the work. So really to be safe, that gear has to be sitting in a warehouse somewhere near Winchester, you know, by like May 1st, to be really, really confident that it's all going to be ready to go. And so in conversations with management, engineering, and planning, and DPW, it was felt it would be better to hold and issue that package like in the fall, when we can be absolutely confident we'll have it ready to go. It's just not work that can get done like over New Year's break, February break, and so forth. So making some good progress. We're going to have to wait a little on the electrical. And on the McCall Masonry Project, because Town Meeting did give us money to prepare the full construction documents, we have a very detailed, like 94-page report on all the deterioration on the front of McCall, but it's not really construction documents. So that architect and the preservationist is putting together those documents that'll then be the basis for an updated cost estimate. And we're talking about that historic facade that faces Main Street. So it's the brick, it's the joinery, it's the cast stone and so forth. So that, that's in progress and hopefully we'll have a number that we can talk about here back at this table as we roll into the summer capital cycle and we talk about priorities and have a sense of what that will cost. And we're in the same position on Lincoln, where Gale Engineering is actually a firm that was hired. So they're doing some borings right now on site. You guys will recall, a lot of the site work has just settled and it's fallen apart. It appears, based on DPW's review, a lot of that just was not poured with proper foundations. So we all understand that's a problem. You've got to have proper foundations, but you also have to understand what's in the ground so you understand what kind of foundations you need. So they're doing that investigative work and putting together a set of construction documents as well. So I'm hoping maybe by June, we'll have some hard numbers and we can also kind of talk about priorities that, with other capital projects that we'll be asking for over the summer. That's it.
Quick question, Mr. Nixon. Are you preparing these documents and estimates presuming that they will go back into a capital queue for next year or for funding at Fall Town Meeting?
So that'll, I'm, I'm presuming we'll talk about it in the summer in the context of other capital asks. Capital has, capital and Town Meeting have funded this work so far because they see it obviously as a priority. So that's generally means we would expect to move forward. If the cost estimates come in line with what we've previously expected, I would expect there would be support at the capital table to advance them. The challenge, though, I can't predict what'll go to Fall Town Meeting because all of those projects that we're interested in are also considered in the context of like a new fire engine, right?
Right.
Or something for the police or what have you. And the funds are limited.
So they just go back in the queue is what?
They, they get reevaluated, yes. And as, as you know, some capital projects are pushed forward in the fall, some wait until the spring. So most school stuff, we try to fund at Fall Town Meeting because we need to get contractors on board so they're ready to go like the first day of summer. So we'll know more this summer when we talk about it.
On the Morocco work, just so I have it, it's going to be happening this summer?
All the roof replacement and the masonry repair will be happening this summer.
Does that impact the ability of Morocco to host any summer programs?
Not so far as I am aware. It will, the electrical work will shut down the school.
Yep.
Yep. And that electrical work, by the way, includes adding some supplemental site lighting for security. And in a few places where it really makes sense to do it, we're switching out the lamps to LED. So there's a little bit of cost savings there as well. We've talked as a committee about the potential, if the numbers come in favorably, we might have money left over to keep working on that sink replacement in Morocco. And I hope that we would be able to do that. But since we're holding off right now on the electrical, we're going to have to have that conversation probably like in December or something. Engineering and planning's goal is to issue the electrical package like in October or November. And once we get those numbers, then we can talk about, making more progress on other stuff.
And Frank, as far as you know, that programs during the summer will be on at Morocco?
Yeah, I mean, as far as I know, in, in, Dr. Ellen, I don't know if you, we've had initial conversations about summer programming locations, but.
Yeah, we, we're hoping not to have much at Morocco because it is very hot. So we're trying to, we're working on with Andrew's centralizing programs, Pam and I.
I could, I could add that a young man attended a program last July at Morocco and though it was hot, it was in the morning and he was quite satisfied with the temperature with it ending at.
It was at the end of August when the teachers were even emailing saying, is there a chance we can do this virtually?
Yeah, it's about midday that those buildings get bad.
Yeah.
We'll let you know how the bids actually come in on the roof.
Okay. Then we will next segue into the report from Mr. Nardone.
Okay, thank you.
On the Lynch Project.
So we left here last week with a directive or question if we could get everyone off the site of Lynch, all the students. And we went back to work. Dr. Hackett had to do his side. And from the construction side, we can do it. We can get them up here. It's, it won't be easy. There's a lot of infrastructure. But at the same time, I mean, it's always been in the background to try to do that, but you need a push. It does shave six to 10 months off the overall schedule, which even though the students are there watching a building going up and then they're watching one coming down, the, you take off that six months. So we have a chance of walking out in the fall of '25 if we do vacate the building with minor landscaping maybe to be done versus a new building, fall '25, move in, and then tearing, abating, tearing down the old and then landscaping into spring, possibly summer of '26 with a lot of plantings going through the summer. There was also savings to be had that we shared on the 22nd with FITCOM. Do you have that available?
I'm just calling it up right now.
These are rough numbers, but there were some hard savings, especially with scope duration change. There's some costs we're going to call cost avoidance, which would throw off costs that we're not expecting for a occupied building, which we have no way of putting a number to those. And then we have the shot or the risk avoidance of just things prolonging through the job. Yep, so that's right there. Top is the hard savings. The $90,000 is not plugged in because that's just a verbal approximate savings on the hazardous, the abatement.
It's that line item six, if you guys can read that. So this, this was kind of the, these were the screws we were all kind of putting to Charlie when he was last here, which was what would you save, you know, on construction cost if you cut all this time off the project? And that's very hard to monetize when you look at the whole project. But what, what the design team was comfortable saying is, well, let's take like a piece of the Lynch Project. It's a big round number. Our industrial hygienist says we have about a million dollars of abatement at Lynch. So if you were to let a contract for abating Lynch that could start in, let's say, the summer of '23, let's say like July '23, versus waiting until July '25 to do it, you know, there's going to be real cost for escalation on a contract that's worth a million bucks. Now that's, not everything saves two years, but abatement could and similarly demolition could as well. Other elements of the project, we would be talking about, you know, maybe six, seven months in terms of shortening. But just on that one line item, you know, it's, they're thinking, yeah, you might save 90 grand. But there's a bunch of line items for which you might save 60, 50, 90, 125. So my own hunch is there's, that, that could easily be a, that could be a seven-figure number. It could be. But, but that's why Charlie's uncomfortable to say so. We would really have to kind of add it all up. But it's going to be significant. It just contributes to that bottom line. And not running the sixth school, like we said.
Yeah, that's on the.
Isn't under cost avoidance?
It's avoidance, but we don't have that, that, you know, we don't have those numbers to show. So, so it's real. It's a matter of, of making it work. And we can't start the work on until after Town Meeting to see if we have to fund the design. It was brought up, there is infrastructure at the park. There's, that will have to be looked into, electrical, probably not water, but definitely sewage. And as Town Manager brought up infiltration, we have to think about. So it won't be easy, but it can be done, is what I have to say.
So that's a range of savings? 1.825 to 2.114 million? Okay.
In, in a week, it's very hard to, we don't have real drawings. It's, there's, there's nothing to really put a hard number on.
Yep.
The, the top one is probably number one savings was the only one that we could really take out of the estimate because there was an estimate for how many, for project supervision during those amount of months. So you cut the months off, that's an easy one to take out of the estimate. Other than that, the rest are just.
Dr. Hackett, you, you got that utility number in part came from some work you did.
Yes, actually, yeah. Andrew Maron worked with Pete Lawson. And that, those are real, those are year-over-year average costs. So it's about $175,000 actually for just utilities per year, right?
And there's a line on there, number five. So the committee, you don't, you're, Jay, don't, don't move. But there's a note there about, you know, we could save two years of high priority capital expenditures. So the, the note there to the committee is that as part of our five-year capital plan, which we develop every year and including the last time we developed it and we were obviously, we were, if not, maybe we were already out of eligibility at that point, knowing that we would be building a new Lynch and knowing the goal is fall of '25, we still have the Lynch that we have today. And some elements of that building are in very, very poor shape. So part of our five-year capital plan is to make some investments in replacing some things at Lynch because we just don't believe they're going to last until the fall of '25. So that's why you see that range there of 225 to 344 because it, it just literally means you can abandon the building two years earlier and therefore you're not keeping it going with Band-Aids and duct tape.
I, I really appreciate you sharing this with us and you bringing this to us today. I'd just like. I'd just like to make a request particularly because as we're going forward with this Lynch project and there are gonna be decisions to be made at EFPBC and decision school committee is gonna have to make, that when we have documents, particularly ones that include numbers like this and we're looking at savings and costs and things like that, if we could just make sure we get them in advance of the meeting, because I appreciate the information that's being presented here, but I'm having a really hard time processing the numbers, processing the information and feeling like I'm meaningfully contributing to the conversation at the same time. So if we could just have a practice, particularly with this project going forward, to have these documents in advance of the meeting, it would just really help me out because I, I just, I, I can't process and listen at the same time. So...
And I'd agree with Michelle. I mean, it says March 22nd in the top right. So it's...
Yeah, I understand. The March 22nd is when we went to FinCom to figure this out and we had to go back to EFPBC last night.
Yeah, I, I understand, I understand. But then it shouldn't have been on this agenda for us. This isn't, this isn't, this is our issue, not yours.
Right.
But...
This is just to report back to what you asked, can be done.
Right.
Maybe the numbers don't have to be there, but the answer is what you, what you want to be done can be done.
Thank you. We, we appreciate your work. It's...
No, the words Jay's point is that the EFPBC was actually hearing for the first time last night.
Right.
That last night was the first EFPBC meeting since Charlie was here talking to all of us.
Yeah.
And the committee was saying, wow, if we could get everybody off site.
Right.
We should probably really look at that. Can we really do that? And would that, would that really save? And you know, the only thing Charlie was prepared to talk about was the general conditions, although subsequently the estimator actually came back with those numbers. So, so...
Right. I know, and it's really exciting to see all that, but again, it's just hard to like think about it and make any meaningful, because there's no cost on this too. And I know moving everybody off site is gonna have an increased cost as well.
Yeah.
So it's hard to talk about a cost savings when we don't have a cost increase to compare it against. And I appreciate the communication and keeping us in the loop. It's just, like I said, I'm just finding it hard to like take it all in.
Oh, so I get that point. So I think, but, but to close the loop, I think the reason we were trying to put this together was we understood at the last school committee meeting that because like not all the kids fit here in the building.
Right.
We have to have some modulators.
Right.
And so the, the feeling from the design team is you gotta have at least eight modulators.
Right.
And so we know what that's gonna be in terms of project cost. It's around three to 3.2 million bucks.
Right.
So what, what we thought we were charged to do was to go back and figure out, can you, putting aside for a moment the fact that clearly the Lynch community would prefer to be together offsite and that is, I'm not saying that they have to net each other out because that's an important point that they've made. What I think we understood you wanted us to do was try to figure out what are the kinds of ranges of either savings or cost avoidance. And then it was, it was Charlie's suggestion to kind of come up with some risk avoidance topics as well. This is really just a draft document. We even said that to FinCom and we wanted to bring this to EFPBC last night and say, so this is kind of what we're hearing from the architect and the, and management with some input from Frank, what do you think? What are we missing? So this, this document really only comes tonight because the EFPBC actually saw it last night and had some conversation about it. So it's not being brought forward to like approve a specific dollar.
There's no action and it's, to lead on from this point on to go forward and, and think about, and then we'll answer whatever we have to answer. I mean, questions came up last night too, that we have to still do homework on. Some of them, like you said, you know, the, the new cost, what can we do? Where can we put trailers? There's a lot to do.
Right.
What was really helpful about last night's meeting was, so the, the expression I use is that, you know, with school committee sort of sets the guardrails for the EFPBC to work kind of within. And they were, there are a number of members of the committee that obviously see the value in getting everybody off site. It's probably on that list somewhere. We don't have to create an early package. We don't have to pay a bunch of fees for architects and engineers. You know, when we take off one end of Lynch, that means we have to abate a part of it, take a part of it down, but then we don't leave it open. We have to build a wall. We have to actually build an exterior wall on Lynch that we're then gonna tear down in less than two years. So that, that just, that's all expensive, you know? It adds up. So those were some interesting conversations last night. But the EFPBC said was, okay, so the school committee asked you guys to look into it and now you're, you're, you're sort of beginning to, to describe this in three sort of categories. Is this something, does the school committee really want us to look at moving the kids all offsite? And Jay said, well, that's something we're gonna talk about with the school committee Tuesday night with Frank.
But that's what I'm saying. I'm not ready to talk about that yet, not with this information.
And I, I agree. And there is a fourth category that has no dollar value to it, but after being on there, it's the only fair thing to do. We did it to all the other elementary schools, VO, Ambrose, Lincoln. No one had to deal with contractors right there. High school's a different subject because the only way it could be done, but they're adults, they're not young kids running around. So moving them out is another category that it's the fair thing to do to these parents and the students.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Yeah. So I really appreciate this. And I'll say, I think there's two issues that we have tonight. One is sort of a substantive issue, one is a process issue of how information comes and how we can see it. And I'll say from, from where I sit, you know, I can only see actually half the chart and I could get up and move around, but so I hear you about being able to process the visual information.
Right.
That said, I appreciate that Jay's put this together because if he came and just told us this verbally, that I would find that even harder to process.
Absolutely, right.
And, and I also appreciate that it's, it's a work in progress. You know, I, I am curious, you know, or wondering about the, you know, the, the cost avoidance stuff, you know, if that's something that we will be able to quantify at some point because it seems that, it seems that that would be useful to know. You know, we, we know presumably what, what we pay to, for various, you know, janitorial staff and, you know, utilities and other, whatever the costs are of operating the building for an extra two years. Because I think it, when you get to the substantive part of this, and I, and I get that we, we may not be able to see enough of it right now and all this, but, but at the end of the day, you know, I'm trying to weigh, you know, the, the, the community desire and the equity issue that Jay just mentioned about, you know, having the kids offsite and, and you know, there's additional costs in doing that and there's different ways that different parts that get paid for and things. The, the numbers start to look big sometimes. And so if you don't look at the other side of the ledger that says, but you also have all these cost avoidance or these, these potential savings, you know, that sort of mitigates it and, and makes the number maybe, you know, it's hard to talk about whether substantively, you know, what the options are without looking at, well, what's it gonna cost and what's it gonna save and then subtracting the two and figuring out what, you know, what's the real net here. And then of course, how is it paid for and over time and all, all those issues. But, but anyway, on, on the procedural piece, you know, yeah, I think it would be great if we had this on our screens, you know, in advan, in advance certainly, in front of us, real time. But I also appreciate that this is coming pretty hot off the press and, and, and I appreciate that it's not all verbal because that'd be harder to process for me.
Yeah, I think this was basic, remember when Charlie came to the last school committee meeting with Jay, they were coming to say, we've been trying to minimize the amount of swing space because it's not reimbursed. We're trying to minimize how many, what's the minimum number of kids we need to get offsite? So the EFPBC kind of had a plan. It was the school committee that said, okay, wait a minute. Thanks for all that hard work, but if you could get everybody off, what would that do to the schedule? And that was a very interesting conversation I did not anticipate. And I think that, but it was a very helpful conversation. It, it, it's, it comes on the one hand, a little late in the process, but it's a, it's a very, other things have happened like that. I mean, the whole music department at Winchester High School is in such a better place than it was gonna be and, and people kind of questioned it a little late in the process. And that's what's great about it is there's a process, you know, we have some check-ins and sort of say, this is what we're doing. Does this seem right? If, as I read it, it was the committee that said, this may be something we should really explore. If we could do this, maybe we should do this. So you're, I think the EFPBC has done some of that work. We got management and the architect to come back and say, you could do it, that this is, here's a range. Remember, that's just one category of what you sort of save. That doesn't take into account the cost avoidance. Dr. Hackett, you know, you're the superintendent, you've talked with the community. I, I don't think we're doing ourselves much good if we say, okay, thanks for looking into it, but now we're not sure what we think.
So, yeah.
This would be, this train is rolling. So we couldn't...
So let me, let me just remind, from my perspective, remind the committee that I believe that at the last meeting that both Charlie and, and Jay were at and went through the presentation to show, I believe the modular units, that the image of the modular units attached to Parkhurst and what that looked like going into the parking lot, I believe that was part of that presentation. To which then the discussion was, started to become when we started looking also at the Lynch site. And I actually, I think I've said it a lot along with many of you, you know, maybe it does make sense for us to take a stronger look at getting all the kids off the site, right? Because we were looking at that playground. That was what struck, struck me for some reason. It struck me in that moment because we're all trying to make this work. But from my perspective and my recollection is that the school committee wanted us to look at that. And I was then charged with going out and doing some of the work that I haven't presented to you yet around how would we do this?
Right.
I'm trying to work within the parameters of knowing that those modular units are not free. You know, we have right now, we've looked at eight modular units. We know what that looks like outside of Parkhurst. You could imagine what 10 would look like, just bumping them back out into the parking lot area unless it's reconfigured some other way, as, as high as 12, which probably would not be likely or possible for us to do. So while I, I don't control the documents from the EFPBC, but I, and I appreciate the discussion around getting this stuff earlier. One of the reasons why, not only just with the reorganization and the election and all, just the timing of all that, that you moved the meeting to tonight was because the EFPBC did not meet last week. They met last night and they wanted to review, and I think it's their obligation for them to review and vet this stuff first. They wanted to review the work that had been done around this and what, what this was starting to look like. So I don't know if there's a way to better coordinate when EFPBC receives information. Maybe we can just forward it to the school committee from now on. Maybe that's just a bet. If it's public information, it's public information and we can just send it along and that can become the practice. But I don't, I mean, again, I appreciate the point, but I don't necessarily think it's out of line procedurally because EFPBC could have looked at this last night and said, well, let's strike these three things or we wanna add these four things.
Right.
And it could have been a different document. So I, but again, I appreciate the point. And then on top of that, FinCom wanted to meet with the EFPBC last Tuesday. So they were on their schedule and trying to just thread the needle on these timelines, which is, I, I don't think, it's not an underestimate, understatement to say that this project has just been pushed and accelerated so much more quickly than any other project that I've ever been on. And certainly, you know, really because of the fact that you went back and got an additional enrollment allowance from the MSBA, COVID happened. And, but the timeframe from when we submitted the PDP to when we're gonna submit the PSR, my acronym's right.
Don't forget the FAS.
The FAS is just extremely accelerated. And the work that goes on behind the scenes and candidly out of my office, I'm looking forward to this pacing itself out maybe at some point a little bit better, but it's been pretty accelerated. So...
And we did say at the prior meeting that, that we, I, I believe that we understood that there was going to be the EFPBC meeting on March 28th and that information that would be going to them would be hot off the presses coming to us tonight.
So I think that covers, I don't know, I mean, I think from my perspective, which is in terms of like, you know, what's, what's, not to say jurisdictional, but the school committee's real interest, I think, is where the kids are gonna be, right? And where the central office is gonna be obviously as a result of that. But you have, you should be the governing body that talks about
Correct.
where these kids go.
Right.
Right? Because you and I are gonna be the ones getting the phone calls on, on how come you did this and you didn't do that.
It's our responsibility.
Absolutely. So I, I think absent, while, while cost is one factor and obviously it matters, right? I mean, there's still, you know, even if it costs more to bring all the kids off the Lynch site, if that were what you thought were educationally the right thing to do and logistically the right thing to do, even though they can make this safe, is really, really tight. And do you want to have that constant kind of worry in the back of your mind of how's it gonna go? You know, is everything, is everything on schedule? How, you know, how we get the kids in and out? We're gonna shift their entrances? We're gonna, how are we gonna communicate all that? I think that to me is a, is beyond the dollar value. I think that to me, that is really the decision that the school committee has to ponder and weigh in on about where do you want these kids to be during this construction project?
Right.
And, and to the dollar value point, I appreciated you saying eight to 10 to, to 12 modulars. I haven't seen a clear, concrete estimate on that. So if we have one, I'd love to see that. I've heard...
That was the last meeting.
That was the last meeting.
3.2 million project cost for eight.
For eight.
For eight?
Yes.
But I'd like to know what, if we've mentioned 10 and 12, I'd like to know how that works out and...
So my goal is to do it without 10 and 12.
Okay.
And, and we have been in central office, we have met several times on this, you know, programmatically, because there, there would likely be some impacts on, on other schools within the district. Because we have programs, for example, at Lynch Elementary, our autism program
Yes.
is, is likely not gonna be able to come over here as well as all the other kids over here. We have to think about, are there other places within the district that we would be able to think about housing these programs, right? Pre, pre, pre
Pre-school.
Pre-school is another example.
Yep, absolutely.
So that's what we're doing now. We're actually auditing. Andrew has been participating in this, going, he's been, he's done a couple of site visits going through because we know, for example, at Ambrose, we have two modular units there.
Yeah.
Right? We have another space probably at Ambrose that we could probably use. So what does that do for us? We know that Link, at Lincoln, we do have some, we will have some additional class spaces next year partly based on enrollment. We know VO is pretty tight. We know that Morocco potentially could have some space. So, you know, when we think about the kind of the, the radius around Lynch and what are the schools that would make the most sense? I mean, certainly Morocco, Lincoln and Ambrose are the ones that are along with Parkhurst, the closest to trying to get kids to. So that's the work we're doing now because the task or the, the goal is to not increase the modular cost because I think rough estimate and then there what, $250,000 apiece? So it would be really good if we could do it with eight. What, what concerns me around it is just the, the enrollment is just such to me still in question. You know, we've recovered some. We haven't recovered fully. And, you know, we will have a better handle on, to the point earlier tonight about kindergarten registrations too. So we'll have, you know, so there's some risk involved in it. We just wanna make sure we're, we don't lock ourselves into a situation that we can't support. But the goal again is to work off of the eight modular units here and then find ways to create the space elsewhere if we need to.
And so the eight was 3.2 and that estimate was from the architects? Who was that from?
Right.
There are two estimators on the job. One of them works directly for Tape A and another estimator kind of looks over their shoulder. So
Okay.
That's, that was an estimate from like, I think, four days before Charlie came to speak to us.
Got it.
So it's a very recent estimate, yeah.
Great.
And to be clear, so that, that 3.2 is not eligible for reimbursement, but it's eligible to be rolled into the project funding agreement, right? So the, the EFPBC, I think, has been really clear from the very beginning to say, okay, we just need to confirm. Our, our impression all along, even before we hired Tape A, because other architects interviewed for the job said, and we talked about this at the table, right? When we were interviewing firms, they said, you're gonna need swing space. Well, how much swing space are we gonna need? Well, we can't tell you. You're gonna, you're gonna need some swing space. You're gonna have to move some kids off campus. And that continued with Tape A. And the EFPBC sort of from the very beginning was trying to understand, so how many do you have to move off to build the project? The idea being, let's minimize the number of kids that we have to move offsite.
Right.
I think the EFPBC has been very clear that that's been our mode of operation absent somebody telling us, no, 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 you should do it differently. I mean, a lot of people on the committee have said, boy, it'd be great if there's a way we could get everybody offsite.
But Tape A specifically identified eight classrooms. That was the number they gave us and have been consistent with that number for quite some time.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't until we came back here that we talked about really, I mean, Tape A would always have wanted all the kids offsite.
Yeah.
But it was back...
And I think I said, is there an option C?
Right, right.
You did.
Which is what, yeah. Well, thank you. So you started all this. So, yeah. And, and the option is, we can get all the kids offsite. I'm confident we can do it. I'm, and I'm relatively confident we can do it within the parameters of what's already been priced out at, at eight modular units. I also just wanna mention that, you know, we, across the board, we have some enrollment declines, right? Or at least we flattened out. So we're, we're still continuing to have the conversation around how many sections for next year. And, you know, I believe just looking forward, it's likely we're gonna have some flexibility even with Lynch sections next year. So it may not be as many sections that we're trying to get offsite as we currently have right now. And obviously, always the big question mark is kindergarten and that's a big question mark every single year. But right now, we're running five sections of kindergarten at Lynch and we do not need to be running five. So, you know, we need, we can think about what would happen if we, all of a sudden we did need a fifth one or, or whatever number we need, then we have to get creative. But some of that information, we won't know until we get into the fall. Then we have to get creative. But some of that information, we won't know until we get into the fall.
And just for clarity's sake, because a community member asked me this question today. If, and I didn't know the answer, so I'm asking people who I believe do. If all of Lynch were to come here to Parkhurst. Would the current preschoolers that are here still all be here? Or would we need to find another space for them and where would they go?
It would be likely we'd need to find another space for preschool.
Okay. And so that is just another piece of it that.
Exactly.
I presume Andrew is working on.
Uh, Andrew and me, yeah.
And you now.
And we, yeah, and again, at all. So that is a discussion in central office too, because, you know, obviously we have experience with with Jen and Lori around what programs we have. And Jason, what programs we offer. Pam, we're on special education. So we have sat down a few times to talk about what might some of the options be.
Well, and to be clear, when I asked if there was an option C, I didn't expect to know back this week.
Well, see, that would have been good to know when you said it.
I thought, I thought you wanted to know back because the timeline is what it is. Like, like the, I mean, you finished my sentence. EFPBC needs to know. If this is something you really want to do.
We need to know.
Right.
We need to know which direction we're going in.
Right.
You know, it's not, we're either designing, you know, how we're designing. If we do get away with eight, it's easier because it's not as big, but that's still up. You know, we need some definite answers.
By when?
And and there's time to figure that.
That's what I was going to say. What's the timeline on that?
There's time to figure it, whether it's eight or 10. I'll say it doesn't, it matters in terms of the ultimate project cost, but that's not consequential to this decision. Just like. But it won't be. It will not be in the context of the overall Lynch project cost. Just because there are elements of the Lynch that we see today in the little cartoons Charlie has presented. That some will, other elements will appear, some will go away. That building's going to change so much. That, and there will be costs associated with that. Elements will go down in price, elements will go up in price. So it really is not consequential whether it's eight or 10. But the issue is, does the committee? Understand, because I think what Jay is bringing back is to say, yeah, we, you know, this would be sort of the savings, this would be the risk avoidance. There certainly, there's appeal in terms of delivering the project. I love Charlie had made that comment. Do you see the last one down there, which is, it's the not my fault? With, you eliminate that early package, contractors can literally be responsible. And I've got, you know, I'm sure you have it, Jay and I've got experience with this, that multiple trades, multiple packages. That opens it up for somebody to say, oh, I was going to, but it wasn't ready on this day of the month and therefore I'm not responding. Happens all the time.
You'll have contractors bidding a job in, you know, 23, that they're not going to go on site until fall of 25.
Yeah.
They're, they could be out of business by the time they started on the site.
Yep.
And the GC's hiring someone else to do it. Who knows? It's just, if that was moved, now that site contractor is now the first one in the door. It it changes a lot of stuff. It's a lot of heavy numbers up front that get out of the way. So, but there's a lot to do. It's, it's, there's just so much to do on this.
There's a lot to do, but it, but it's an exciting prospect though, to be able to get the kids off site. Because it, on the one hand, it creates some extra work, but it totally eliminates a bunch of other work. That can get in the way of the bigger picture, which is the bigger.
It's probably the largest site we've had to work with out of all the schools, but the tightest site. With the limited access, trucks coming in, there's just. It's got the most logistics out of all the projects we've done. Really, just a tough job.
I want to also just sort of back on a prior point, but just echo Frank, my appreciation for the work that you're doing. To look at things that are sort of district wide programs versus, you know, the Lynch specific. Because another thing we heard loud and clear from the Lynch community is they'd like to be together as much as possible. So to the extent that, you know, more of the of the Lynch community can stick to, you know, because understanding that some, you know, we, we want to use available space and be efficient and things. But but where there are district wide programs, you know, that's in my mind, supports that goal of keeping the Lynch folks together.
And as we start to put those pieces together, it would be great to also have the transportation cost estimate. Because we'll be moving students different places and we'll have to pay to do that if it's further than it's supposed to be. So that would be another number. Though a small number, it's still.
No, it's another number we're working on.
As a piece of it.
No, and I actually, I, it would be great if more kids took the bus to get here from Lynch. Because if you imagine eight portable or eight modular units hanging off the end of this building. With what you saw, the adjustments have to be with just the in and out of the of traffic flow and the, and the parking. I would rather be running more buses and dropping kids off than having.
Discounted bus pass.
Well, I mean, you know, as it is now, even with the preschool, I mean, we queue, we queue up down the road. So. Yes, we'll have, we'll have that as well.
Yep.
And and we would have, but to Seamus's point, we were going to have, we were going to have some extra transportation costs anyway. If we were going to have like, two or three grade levels off site over here and two or three still over there. And, you know, geographically, they could be anywhere. So that's almost like, that was an extra expense we were going to have to run, period. And but to your point, now, there's a distance issue. I think that's where you're coming from.
Yes.
Yep.
So what, so what does the EFPBC need from the school committee and by when? I guess to support you.
We're still following what we have to do for MSBA right now with the submission. I mean, tomorrow's a big day. We really don't need a decision. For a couple of weeks. I mean, direction.
Certainly, I, I think we, it's helpful to know that the preference of the committee is.
Preference, but not, it's not like a vote that says you have to get the kids off. We need from, from Dr. Hackett, we need a lot of stuff back in. Our committee has asked us to look at the hard numbers for everyone off. So there is some homework that we have to do that came last night. So you see what everyone else has seen.
I'm sorry you got assigned homework on a Monday night. It's not.
But alternatively, bringing this back to you, if the committee basically said, okay, okay, that, that whole conversation was a lark with Charlie. This is too much for whatever reason. Let's just stick with the original plan. Let's just move to grade levels off. The EFPBC would like to know that. If this committee still feels interested and excited about the prospect of moving kids off as much as it did when Charlie was here with Jay. Especially now that you see the information.
And with the input from the parents and the.
What's that?
And with the input from the parents and the staff.
Well, again, I mean, I defer to Dr. Hackett on this because that was sort of his, his task force. But it, that, that interest was very strong. And then I think it, it really does fall on Frank's shoulders to figure out which pieces need to move. One is you move preschool out of here to some other place to make room. Another, which you discussed with the task force, right, was those kindergarten kids, they're not, they're, they're not assigned to a school. Because they haven't been to school yet and they're all coming from somewhere. And there are four adjacent elementary districts. So is that an option to look at, you know, reassigning kindergarten? There's the specialized learning center there. And it, and I think it's a conversation for you to continue to have, you know, with the community and think about some of the operational impacts.
Well, I mean, I'm comfortable sitting here right now, tonight, after having gone through all what we've gone through, having looked at the possibilities. And having heard from the, the task force and the parents involved of recommending to you that we get all the kids off the site. I mean, the logistics of exactly how, how many modulars, where does it all land? Transportation, food service, I mean, all those pieces that will have some form of an impact are operational that we need to figure out. But I, I just don't, I would not feel good, nor did I, it was interesting, I, I think, parents. The responsive parents and staff were that they don't like the idea of just two or three of their grade levels being somewhere else. I mean, if you think about it, it's so disjointed. It's hard enough for them to maintain, you know, kind of the Lynchy, the Lynch school community.
Right.
That they have created and take a tremendous amount, justifiably so, of pride in. When you're not in that building, to split them up in any way, shape or form, I think is going to be very difficult. So, you know, the challenge is how do we get them all off the site, minimize, you know, the impact of how many students? We would need to think about being somewhere other than Parkhurst. You know, we may be able to get them all on here with, with 10 modular units. But then I think there's other implications about, is that comfortable for the program, you know? And you want kids to be able to make sure they've got space, the outside space, traffic flow and all the rest of it. So, you know, again, I, I, I am very comfortable saying tonight that I, I would be my strong recommendation. That we work toward getting all the students off the site. I think it's the right thing to do for programmatically, educationally, and I think from a construction perspective. And, you know, what the numbers you saw and the ranges that were been estimated tonight. From costs, you know, cost savings to actual cost avoidance is, is, you know, also helps to make the case for it. But I think just for the purposes of what we're trying to do as a school system, it's the right thing to do.
And I do think we can push more, it, it, the time has been very short since our last meeting. But we could, I think, go back to Peter Bradley and say, give us some numbers on like, what about the demolition? What about some other elements?
And I think a takeaway from tonight is, almost like you hit on, yes, continue fine tuning this. Or no, it's just a, you know, you came back and forget about it. We're going to stay as planned. So I think that's, you know, the consensus is to continue on trying to fine tune this, get the final numbers. Make sure we can do it with the modules and, and then report back with more concise plans of what we can do.
Yeah. So I guess that's my.
We're not scrapping it, you know, basically getting everyone off right now.
And I guess that's my concern and why I think, and I appreciate you coming back tonight. But I'd like more information and I'm willing to wait a little bit longer time to get it and more complete information. Because there was one time this committee sat here and said, we're going to be able to keep all of Lynch and in Lynch and build on the field next to it. And not have to move kids off that site at all. So before we dug into the project and found out that wasn't going to be possible. So I also don't want to promise to the community that we're going to move everybody off site before we have all the information to make that possible. And then find out that we can't put 10 portables back here. Or that we need to move too many programs off. Or that we're really not promising keeping all Lynch together. What we're promising is keeping grades two through five together. And, and the preschool is going to have to go elsewhere. So I, I don't want to create the narrative that we're moving all of Lynch off of Lynch into, onto Parkhurst. Until we know exactly what that looks like. I would like to say, I would like to continue to pursue option C and find out what the costs. The logistics and the parameters around that are going to be and going to entail. Before we say we're committing to that, if that makes sense.
It does, I would, it does. And I would just say that I, I am confident we can get all the kids off the site. So it really is the last part of what you were saying. You know, is it two through five and is preschool somewhere else? It's all those pieces that are still going to be in question. And they may be in question as we move into the fall. Because candidly, until we see the students that show up in the fall and what those enrollment numbers look like.
Right.
You know, that will have a huge, that could have a big impact on how many sections are we really trying to move when we come around FY '23, FY '24. So, but I, I am confident that we can do it. It's just how, what is it going to look like?
Right. Well, there's a difference in the language between we're moving everyone from Lynch to Parkhurst to we're moving everybody off site.
Understood completely. Which is why I brought up, you know, we need to look at Morocco, we need to look at Ambrose, we need to look at Lincoln. Because those spaces can provide some.
I just want to be careful with how we're talking about.
I agree completely. I understand.
And I think connected to all that, you know, we've, we've heard about. The Carriage House, we've, we've taken some action on that. That is in process. But I think we continue to get questions about what other options there would be. And so if, if there was a way to have more concrete numbers on what the other options would be. I think that would be helpful as well. So be it anything from. Having to rent space for our central office staff to other more creative solutions that people may or may not want to come up with. Not saying that I. Support or am against any of those, but just I think we want to have all the options on the table for folks. I've definitely heard that loud and clear from a lot of members of the community.
You're looking for the A, B and C on central office?
Yes, definitely.
So I would like to just clarify for the record. I don't believe Ms. Bergstrom, this school committee ever said, we could build a new building on the field and keep the original there. I understand why it may appear that way in the master plan because we have like a little site plan. We show a, a new building adjacent to the existing, not unlike the diagram Charlie has shared. Because that new N5 is sort of across from the building. But as you know, Charlie has said, well, the only way to practically build it is you got to start taking off bits and pieces of Lynch. There was a time, former school committee member, maybe more than one, expressed optimism around the idea of building a new Lynch. Whether it's in the, we weren't, we didn't know about the Wellfield at the time. The idea is, you said it well, it's a big site, right? It's the biggest site we've ever had, but it's the most constrained site. I think there was some optimism among some members that we could build a new Lynch. Keep the, keep the Lynch we have occupied and then move those kids into the new building. And even take it a step further and use that old Lynch to like support Morocco.
Right.
I perhaps could have been more forceful at the time. I mean, my skepticism from the get go was only that the MSBA, you know, they'll pay to tear down, they'll pay to abate and tear down a building if it's sort of a part of the project. But they'll tell you to go jump in a lake if you say, can, can, can you reimburse us like six years from now? Because we want to use it for something. So there was, there was some optimism around that, but I don't. I wouldn't phrase it the way you do. I don't think this committee and I don't think our architects, which was Flansburgh at the time, said you could do that. And I, I do believe, so then to compare to the work that's happening today. Tape A and Hill really are looking very carefully at this and really are confident, there's no question that the eight will work. Finance committee asked Charlie a little bit about, or they, they asked through us of Charlie questions about, you know, the 10 or the 12. Charlie has been pushed hard on this. He has said, if you had to get 12, you, you could probably get 12. You basically lose a lot. I mean, you were getting five or six accessible spaces or something. And then that has consequences then on that extra parking that we got to build on the upper field. So I'm very confident. Because of how carefully the team is looking at this, that this is a doable plan. Whether it's eight or 10, I don't think we'll need 12, but it's doable.
And I appreciate that. I just think we need to see it. We need to see more information about it and the logistics around it and everything Dr. Hackett was just referring to.
I mean, it's, occupies a good portion of our day. So, and we'll continue to update you and give you information as we go. And we'll just lay it out as clearly as we can, understanding that there's, you know, some risk proposition involved in it. But I still think the risk reward, right, and I think the reward of getting all the kids off site is, is worth trying to figure out. You know, we've got one more section of kindergarten that we thought we were going to have and what are we going to do about it?
Right.
I think I, I think it's important to get all of the kids out of, off of site, off the site. And I appreciate the idea that, or the, that we can support eight modulars here. And I guess I worry a little bit about hearing about 10 or 12, I guess 12 modulars. If it is really compacted out on the field or wherever we choose to place those 12 modulars. Because then I just think about, well, what would think, what, how would that impact the student culture going outside? School events.
Tape A hasn't said we need 12. They were just, someone directly asked them, would 12 fit? And they said, yes. They don't, they don't believe we need.
They wouldn't necessarily have to go outside. They could all be linked together. I have modulars at my school and you don't know when you go to the modulars. It's beautiful. And so it could, it could be connected.
And these are the plan Charlie shared with us at the last meeting. They're linked together. There's literally a connector coming in right here.
Can I also make a suggestion if we're moving in this direction that either through Tape A or other organizations the town has worked with? That we include some kind of traffic study for this neighborhood into what the impact is going to be?
So can I say, I'm glad you brought that up because the select board asked management to put an article on the spring. There's four articles regarding Lynch coming up on the spring warrant. One of them is the traffic safety study that the select board is looking for.
Or actually the new Lynch.
No, no, no. Let me, let me, let me continue. So when this was brought up first with the select board, I mean, weeks and weeks ago. There was some interest expressed at the table about not just permanent improvements for the new Lynch. But a recognition that it was going to be, take like two school years to build and there was an acknowledgement. You probably have, you know, contractors and trucking coming in on one side and everybody else coming in on the other. And this could be a real imposition on the neighborhood. Someone around that table expressed the hope that in fact, the study might even consider like temporary measures to support Lynch construction. And at that time, I think what we said to the select board was, coming to Springtown meeting might actually be a little early. Only because the board hadn't, you know, would not have voted yet. And so we're not 100% sure what the project looks like. But, you know, the, the board certainly wants to get it moving and to get tool, you know, under contract, right? So I'm bringing, I, I'm glad you raised this because I think the latest version of the article that I saw. Although maybe this could be tweaked in the motion, doesn't really speak to, you know, interim construction measures. But I agree with you 100%. And I think that's where they, that's where they were a few weeks ago. So in my mind, it really doesn't matter. that's where they were a few weeks ago. So in my mind, it really doesn't matter if, if there are kids on-site at Lynch, or they're here, or any other place, if there's traffic consequences that can be mitigated, it would be nice if tool could be studying that. So I'm with you in principle, and that might be something, Dr. Hackett, you could circle back with Mark Too Good about tomorrow.
Mr. Hopcraft?
So yeah, I just wanted to weigh in and say that, that I, I too, continue to support the position of, of moving all of the kids off the site, if we could, I think that's the right, the right choice. You know, I, I reiterate the, the preference to keep as many of the Lynch kids together as possible, understanding, you know, that we'll do what we can do. And, and I understand that there's lots and lots and lots and lots of details, there's, you know, traffic, there's numbers of modulators, there's locating people in all of our other buildings around town, there's costs, and there's cost avoidance and, and all that, and it, and it seems that we have, you know, a, a really good team of people working on these things, and I look forward to, you know, seeing what you come up with. You know, it's, you have more than a jigsaw puzzle here, a three-dimensional thing going on, and, you know, we're, we're all eager to see how the pieces fit together, so.
Me too.
And I believe they will fit together.
I hope someone figures that out.
Yes, but, but from, from, yeah, it sounds like, you know, there's a, I think a number of us, you know, not voting, but just, you know.
We'll get you some Cuisinier rods.
Yes.
So for Jay's-
Thank you, Tom. I agree with what Tom just said, that we need to keep them all together, we need to move them off-site, and to Michelle's point, I also want more information about it.
What you will likely get from me is options.
Yep.
Yep.
I think the options are important, though.
I know, that's why you're going to get them. Sometimes too many, and I'll have to make a decision about how many I'm going to give you.
Is that helpful, Jay?
For the mayor.
Thank you, Jay.
Thanks for not throwing it away.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you for coming.
See you tomorrow, Jay.
Dr. Hackett, maybe we could start a, a shared Lynch folder, that when things become public documents of EFPPC, you could just drop them in for school committee members?
It's a great idea.
Sure, yep. Yep.
Okay, um, so with that, we will move on to an update on the World Language, World Languages Study Interest Survey with Dr. Ellen Emma. I think at our previous meeting, we had talked about gauging the interest of eighth-grade students moving up to the high school, and what kinds of languages they would like to study.
So we did a survey, Dennis, James, and I met to talk about what kind of data we were trying to get to, both to answer this question, and what kind of data we wanted. So we did ask for their preferences, first, second, and third choice for our first language, and a second language, as we know at the high school, some of our students pick up a second language. So, interesting, and looking at our middle schools. So it was interesting to us, there was only maybe two students at the end that had asked for Mandarin one at the high school. So at this point, we wouldn't recommend to increase our FTE to do anything with that at the high school. It was interesting, we had seven or eight students that would like French one, which still isn't enough for a whole class, but clearly those numbers are rising. So we want to make this kind of an annual checking that we do with them based on earlier. So when we come to you with the original thing, we've already gathered the student data, so we know what their requests are, knowing we can't necessarily always fulfill, but when we can, we would like to do it based on what the student's interest is.
Thank you for doing that. I'm, I'm wondering, given the small numbers, is there a way, or at least can we look into the possibility for those students, could they do something different? Could they do it online? Because it seems, given everything we've gone through over the last two years, I would hope that we could figure out a way to let those students take a class online if they wanted to, not to say you have to, but if they say, no, I really want to take French, sure, you can enroll on this class, you can set up here, plug in your headphones, go. I hope we could do that.
We did used to do that, that's how Mandarin kind of started at the high school, when we didn't have personnel, and we had, it, it wasn't that successful, but I will say this, it was before the pandemic, and before we had kind of gotten used to that, there was a question about student motivation, and was the teacher facilitator, because you still need someone who facilitates on-site with all the people we made agreements with, still had to have a part, who did the grades and stuff at the end. There was concern that the teachers were putting in more work than, like, students that had taken it didn't take it as seriously. I think now, after the pandemic, they probably would. So we can definitely explore that option, particularly for French, where we had greater number of students. And one of the things we talked about, which I know we've talked about at this table before, and we're making progress on, but we're not there yet, is we still have too many students at the middle school that don't have a language at the middle school.
Yeah.
So it's really, to me, that's the most concerning, because they've never had a voice or choice. So now they're entering ninth grade, and they have never had an opportunity for all those languages, and now automatically, they don't have an opportunity for French or Mandarin.
Right.
And that's really, to me, unfair, because that's a function of the way that we've implemented the IEP. So we've been making lots of progress, our numbers have greatly reduced to what it used to be, but we still have room to grow.
Yeah, that's clearly an equity issue.
So Jen, I couldn't have said it better myself. I mean, that's, that was part of my motivation in asking the question before. And, and so I'm, I'm also, I'm thinking of that, we, we still do have in migration of families with kids who are rising ninth graders, they're not currently McCall students, some of those may be interested. You can take more than one language at Winchester High School. And, you know, and, you know, you might be, you might be a junior, you might be a junior, senior, you've already fulfilled your, you've fulfilled your language credit with whatever you started at McCall, and, you know, Mandarin seems cool, I'll, I'll try that. What I struggle with is, I mean, I, I do believe if you build it, they will come. The question is, are they sufficient in number to fill a classroom? So do you get four or five just because you offer it? I'm glad you asked about French, and as you know, I pushed a few years ago to get French one. I was saying, we offer one in all these other languages, why not French? And the answer was, well, we don't have enough interest. I'm not sure what the numbers were, but they were very, very low, single digits. And, and I think it was suggested that, you know, students, students who are interested in French are going to express that interest in middle school, we're, we're capturing them. But again-
Except for the students who don't get to have an interest in anything.
Right, any language.
There's no room in their schedules.
And, and you know that I can personally empathize with that. And so this is why I was so, and it's just the way the schedules work at McCall, well, first of all, the way McCall's schedules work are completely different than elementary school, and they're different, again, when you get to the high school. It's just such a tremendous opportunity for some of these kids to be able to do this. I suppose the only other point I will make is, I, having been here at the table when we started Mandarin, so we actually did have a teacher, we had a Mandarin teacher at the high school. And it was tough hanging on, I think, to that person, given the, the, just the fractional employment. So Seamus, that online program we went to, was, we did that as a, a backstop, when we actually lost the teacher. And it was really there to support those kids who had started Mandarin and just wanted to keep taking it. Some of them, I think, were even concerned that what was online just really wasn't robust enough. So there was just disappointment on both sides. But remember, we made this investment in Mandarin at the middle school this time, because we said, we want to build this pipeline for this alternative, a non-Western language. And if that's really what we're doing, one way to kind of increase the diameter of the pipe is to make that option available, is to plan on offering Mandarin one. And see what happens. I don't know if you could do that as a practical matter, like conditional appointment, employment, you know, you hire a teacher and commit to make up a number of point six or something, and say, but on the other hand, if, you know, registration's high enough, you might be a point six plus. But, you know, I'm into some operational weeds here, but if we don't offer it, like if we don't offer Mandarin one now, will we ever? And is that right, given what we were aspiring to do when we got up in front of town meeting and said, we want to offer Mandarin? So I'd just throw that out to the committee to react to. I'm really glad we got Mandarin started, and I'm glad that there's the interest at the middle school. I'm, I'm looking to put gas on the fire and just make the opportunity available.
I have a middle schooler who's taking Mandarin and really enjoying it, and so I encourage other people to, they might like it too.
And sign up for kindergarten registration if you haven't already, because-
And, and I hear what you're saying, Mr. Nixon, but I think what I'm hearing Dr. Ellen Emma saying is there's maybe a couple issues around world languages at middle school, and correct me if I'm hearing you wrong, and that last time we spoke about this, there was some conversation about kids having to choose in sixth grade, and stick with that. So I would suggest, rather than, given the low numbers, that we look into some options that Mr. Brady is suggesting for next year, that we could, we could ask Dr. Ellen Emma, certainly, if that seems manageable to do that, but perhaps that might be something we want to take a broader look at for the following school year. Because I don't want to just add, 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 without looking at the program and making sure that we're adding in the right place and in the right way.
And to Michelle's point, you know, I, I think what we should really seek to do is have the maximum flexibility for the students. So I've had high school students who have gone and taken a language at a community college, so we could easily say, yep, you don't have a second period, because we know you've dedicated to going after school or in the evening to take this class. And generally, it can usually be worked out with the community college, that the cost is pretty low, or nothing, depending on the case. So I, I think as long as we're providing students with the opportunity, I don't think it necessarily has to be during their second period. It just has to be something we're going to give them high school credit for at Winchester High School.
I think that's something we had also looked into during, during COVID.
Right.
Yep.
What gets tough is when you only have eight students, and you can only, even if you were going to run one section, you can only run that one section at one point in the day. And all those kids are locked into having to be free that period, so it messes up their entire schedule. I would just, two, two things. One, I think, you know, the point that, that Dr. Ellen Emma's made about the fact that we're locking kids out of it, is, is I think the first problem we really need to- and I know I say that, knowing that that is a conversation that's already happening. I would just also, at the risk of my own peril, suggest that we're asking kids, when they're ten and eleven years old at the middle school, to lock into a language that they're going to have through high school without the opportunity to, to go back as a freshman and pick up French or pick up Mandarin, because we don't have, you know, the first level sections of that. And I just think that that should also be part of the conversation, whatever that means. And I know this, you know, I know the school department made a commitment to, to sequence in this way. And, you know, whether or not there's a change at the sixth grade level, or whether or not we try to think about ways that we can help kids in the fifth grade level, maybe even understand at least what the options are, whether that's through whatever. I mean, but just to have some sense of, this is what this sounds like, this is what it looks like, this is what the culture's like, this is what I'd be getting into, and here are the opportunities, I think. And maybe we already do that, I don't know, but it just seems like it's pretty early on to be asking kids to make a decision that is going to stick with them.
Right.
Well, that's a good point, and there's certainly, regardless of what we're doing, there's certainly opportunities to do more, and to give the elementary school students more experience with the languages while they're in elementary school, be it through our staff, or even our high school students going and visiting and volunteering with elementary schools, and providing some, you know, small programming, so.
Right, and I mean, I think that's the same idea I was thinking of, and like, we're talking about not being able to switch at ninth grade, you can't even switch at seventh grade. So, you know, you might start in Mandarin at sixth grade, but because the way it's structured at the middle school, you're pretty much locked into Mandarin through middle school, or French, or Spanish, or whichever you choose. It's not like it starts over again in seventh grade.
And, and it's, it's the same staffing issue you face, right? I mean, because then you have to have the staff, you have enough staff to be able, and offer that, that first level of the language in seventh grade. If the kids want to change from sixth to seventh grade, and you might only have five that want to do, it's, you know, so it is, there's a lot of implications, and I'm, I don't understand beyond that, but I just think it's part of the discussion.
And I think we can look at flexibility with the schedule, because just because the way we've always done it at McCall is that way, doesn't mean, if you think about the gradual release model, right? Elementary, their day is pretty, it's picked for them, lots of choices in the day, but their schedule is picked. And at the high school, there's lots of free reign. So like at the middle school, almost like that gradual release of, could we have selective electives? There may be some you have to take, and then some you choose, rather than every student takes this, or, and why you have to be in seventh grade with a seventh grade world language class, doesn't make any sense to me. You could have six and seventh grade together.
Exactly.
Because the other problem happens, if they come to our district not having had foundation, then they're also locked out of the world language. So because we're, and I love the teaming idea, and there's, and if you think about that as most of their day, that's great, but I think we could break out of the concept of how the schedule works, and give a little more latitude to those things. Because if I move here in seventh grade, I ought to be able to take Spanish one with the sixth grader, bulk of sixth graders, right?
It's still March, I really like that point. Is that something we can try and do for next year?
To be honest, I think it would be, people would lose their minds if we talked about changing their master schedule.
They've all lost their minds already.
Yes, that's why we don't want to, it's like that corner game when you're moving.
I think, and I think that's where I started, that I was saying that a lot of, a lot of this has bigger implications, and if that's something this committee is interested in having people investigate, having the administrative team investigate, that might be a good thing to add to our goals, our objectives for the next school year.
But I love the discussion and the push and the ideas, because this is what helps us see this as urgent to move forward with starting to plan for some changes.
And the critical nature of getting the people who need to be in the room, have those conversations that have direct impact, is, you know, is that's, if it were for the people, we'd get a lot of things done, but I mean, we, you know, we need to bring everybody on board and have the discussions, and I'm sure there's plenty, because it does have a ripple effect to the high school as well.
Right.
And we'll say what's so interesting about world language is they were the frontrunners around the standards-based idea at the secondary level, and they're with the proficiency. So all the work they've been doing on for curriculum, that's the content area, it'll be easiest to blend with their proficiency base, to blend grades.
So that's, I was just going to add that, you know, credit to Ms. Troni and her team in the past for the world language review that they did that got us to this point, and it's exciting to be like, okay, what's next?
I know, I mean, Anna was on this before I even came here, she was, I mean, that talked about, that was like, so that was like a decade ago, Anna was already working with them on the proficiency base, before we even did our language. I mean, they are really, so they are the most primed for it, but we have to absolutely be with them and talk through all those logistics. And that's a master schedule blow-up at the middle school, so.
Right, so a longer discussion, is what you're saying.
You might be having some discussion tomorrow, whether you want to or not.
It sounds like it, now that we're on television.
Could be out there, yeah, yeah, I might get an email or two.
But that, that could really have some incredible downstream benefits to a very large group of kids.
Yep.
And those are, so, and those are the kind of decisions that we should be talking about at, at the table, when we can make meaningful impact in the lives and education of big groups of kids all at once. So I think, you know, when, when this came up, I, I think it would be good to have also just a conversation around what do we expect kids to be able to do? And I don't mean like fluency communication, I mean, it's about making choices in that pipeline. What, what choices should kids be able to make, and when? And when can they switch lanes? Because, you know, as you guys know, when we talked about adding Mandarin at the high school, I just thought, oh, it's going to be just like Spanish, it's going to be like Italian. And there's going to be a one, until I realized there wasn't. So that just means, you know, I had a different expectation about what the goals were. So the conversation's important.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you for following up.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is a proposal to change the pay for substitute nurses, so Ms. Kirby?
Sure.
You can discuss this with us.
So just for your consideration, we're asking presently, nurses who fill in for the day are paid at thirty dollars an hour, and that has been the case for four years. And as you can imagine, and as you've heard, the journey of the nurses throughout, especially these past few years, we're having difficulty filling these positions, and we want to be more competitive. And when we look at using outside agencies, because we needed to, because we have, Jen Markham's done a tremendous job with her nursing staff, and, I mean, that woman's been hiring all year long, and there are still buildings that are down nurses, every nurse, every building always has a nurse, but it's not a full staff like we would want. And when we look at the outside agencies, they've doubled or tripled this, this cost. So we just put it out there, and we're hopeful that, you know, you'll think about this, and that we can put this into place for the remainder of this school year. And then as we look out ahead, we'll, we'll talk more about other increases.
So this is not an action item, but it's just presented for initial conversation and awareness?
Correct. Yes. Correct. Yes.
Can I ask a question of Dr. Hackett? So if I heard that right, like 16% increase, you know, hourly rate for some of these positions, was, are some of these numbers already included in your fiscal year budget?
No. So we'd have to make the adjustment. But the debt, the other side of it is, it's, it's, to steal a phrase, cost avoidance. Because at some point, we have to have a nurse in the building. And at some point, some of these other positions, we have to provide the service, right? We've had these conversations. So, and we have been in situations where we cannot find anybody to deliver it and have had to use a contracted service agency, which is not what we want to do. It's not what the union wants us to do. We've had, we're having and have had conversations around that as well. So the fact of the matter is, is that it would cost, it would cost us more money to not increase for these positions. But I still even have a question as to whether or not this makes an impact in the market. I, I just don't know that there's enough people out there. There's, there is, I learned today, Mr. Levine, that there's one, there's 756 school psychologists for every, every, there's 756 students for every one school psychologist in the, in the state of Massachusetts, which is one of the worst ratios in the Northeast. So the same issue that we've had with nurses, we've had with school psyches, we've had with other positions of specialty positions. And Mr. Brady's nodding his head because it's, it's the same everywhere, that we can't find them. And then it becomes, okay, we've got compensatory services, we've got to find out what to do. So I, I think this is a good, to do this for the rest of the year, gives us at least some, some experience and history to, to look at and see whether or not it worked. And maybe it doesn't work. And maybe it's not enough or maybe it's perfect. So, and we will have to make the adjustment. But we do, we do budget sub costs in, in more of a historical spend than we do. It's not a specific, you are a sub and we're hiring you with your name and we know what you're going to make. It's a, it's a pooled money based on history.
So, I'm sorry, quick follow-up clarification then. I, I'm just reading the top of the memo though. This, you're not, there's not a proposal to make a change for this school year, is there?
For the nurses, it is.
For the nurses.
So this says substitute rates for the 22, 23.
Just the nurses are the only ones.
Oh, effective, sorry. It is in bold, isn't it? There it is. Effective immediately. Okay. So just given the proximity to Springtown meeting, maybe this could be monetized for the operating budget?
We talked about that and it's just so difficult to project what it would be. I mean, if we could do like, I mean, right now, we probably need what? Two sub nurses, at least one?
Right. We have staff that are out on leave. The issue is it's that day to day when people call out, right? Or they have COVID themselves or their family does. So that's where we are struggling. And the nurses have their own separate pool when it comes to subs. And really we're competing. We're competing with private, we're competing with other school districts. So it's a, it's a challenge. And again, hopefully this will just increase the pool. And if they're thinking of going to another district, maybe, you know, our extra money will make the difference.
No, I, I think it's a great idea and I appreciate you bringing it to us. Just with it, for the rest of it, I think it would be helpful for us to have kind of estimates on whatever data you have, you know, in, in this school year, we had this many daily subs, you know? So we could have that idea of what that's going to look like. And then also, you know, I would want to know, what do our surrounding communities pay their subs? Cause I think that's really important. There's a benefit to being towards the top. I speak as having been at a school that was at the top and we never had a problem finding subs. We had great subs because we were paying more than anyone else and it, it made a difference. And then I've been at a school where we were paying the bottom and we couldn't find anybody breathing to walk through the door. So it, it definitely has a significant impact. And I'd say, I would love to have more of that data, but I definitely support us doing this for the nurses as soon as possible because it's really important to have someone in that role in a building every day. And this will be a lot more cost effective than hiring an agency person.
And for the remainder of the year, just sort of, I mean, by the time we come back to you, and we're talking probably five or six weeks with the April vacation. So it's not an extraordinary long period of time, but what we'll do is give us a chance to see whether or not, how are we, we could certainly provide you with that information. I'm, I'm, I'm just more curious about, does this work and should we be, should we be monetizing this in, for next year? I mean, because that would be the bigger question. And I would hope that next year we would have fewer absences just across the board.
Have you, have you broached the subject with FinCom Subcommittee yet?
This subject?
This subject? No.
No, this is with you tonight.
This is the first I'm hearing of this.
Okay.
It sounds like, so that, building on what Mr. Brady said, I think there's two data points that I think would be interesting. One is, is what the budget impact is. And I thought I heard you say that you thought there might not be one because you're saving on the higher priced labor. And so there, maybe it's even a positive budget impact or maybe neutral. And then the other, I thought Mr. Brady made a good point about, you know, where we, where we fall vis a vis our peers, just, just to see if, but I, I, I think it makes sense. I think, I know we're not voting tonight, but I'm supportive of, of gathering data for the last five or six weeks of the year.
And just so you know, the National Association of School Psychologists recommends between 500 and 700 to one.
Do they? Cause the National School Guidance Councils recommends 350 to one. So that's interesting. Guidance Councils thinking the more important. Huh? That's what's going on.
It's also a national average where that incorporates school psychologists that may be regionally based.
It's probably not, not a national average in the time of COVID and increased in referrals that they have to be, evaluations have to be done for.
Yeah.
And Massachusetts has a little higher demand for school psychologists than perhaps some other states in our fine country.
I've noticed that. Yeah. No, I've noticed that. Okay. So we'll bring that back to you then.
Cool.
That'd be great. Just, just in the interest, I guess of time, I'll just move on to the Kidsborough. As you know, the Kidsborough contract ends this June, actually. So in the interest of not having to figure out what we're going to do for the summer, Kidsborough was interested. Also in continuing for the summer, this was a contract that we, we are able to do and we were able to act on. So this is really more of an informational item for you. But this is just to get us through the summer. This would expire on August 30th. We will be going out with a request for proposals soon for the 22, 23 school year before and after school care. We're looking for a one-year contract for that. So that will hit the street relatively soon and we'll come back with you just with information. You may want to have someone from the committee representing you in the process of kind of vetting out what the proposals are, so we can make a selection for next year. The idea being that in the fall of next year, we will put together an RFP that will then look for 23, 24 and beyond, at least a three-year proposal for, for enough school care that we can open up to, I, once again, because it's just been difficult. I think Kidsborough has done a, a, a great job. I've got great feedback on Kidsborough. But they've also been, and they've been operating in the time of COVID, right? So, I mean, it's just been kind of challenging for everyone. And I think making a change right now for, in locking into a three-year contract would not be the right thing to do coming out of this year. So this is just informational.
And just to clarify, because we had the question, are parents now able to sign up for Kidsborough for the summer?
Yes. For the summer, I, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that question. I thought we had asked the question about when will they get the information when they're signing up for next year?
Yeah. And I know a few, a few weeks ago, someone wanted to know, when can I sign my kids up for the summer?
I thought that had already taken place.
Is it open? They can do it?
I think they can do it.
Okay. I just wanted to let people know that.
I thought that went out in the elementary newsletter.
It very well could have. I can. Okay. So in the interest of time, I'm wondering if it would be agreeable to the chair and to the committee to actually, I would suggest that you could take the approval of gifts and grants as a total in one motion of 23,944.59 and take the minutes and take those two items out of order. And then what I'd like to do is give you a very brief, high-level overview of mid-year review tonight. And then come back next week. It's, I've always intended to do this in a two-step process. Come back at your next meeting and we could block out more time for that hopefully. So we're not doing it at, you've been here now for three and a half hours. So I would like to suggest that I just kind of just tell you what you're going to be looking at and then for the formative assessment and then come back the next meeting and just, we can have a broader conversation. You'll have the information. I'm sure you'll have questions and all the rest of it. But if it pleases the committee, I would, it would just be maybe cleaner just to get those last two business items out of the way of the grants and the, in the minutes if people feel that they can take them as a, as a package.
If it pleases the chair, I'm happy to move that we approve the meeting minutes of January 18th, 25th, the public hearing minutes of January 25th, the regular meeting of the 31st, the meeting of February 8th and February 15th as presented, including the update from superintendent on the meetings of January 25th that came out today.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The vote is unanimous. And then the other option, the other item was the consideration of acceptance of the gifts totaling 23,000.
On the gifts though, I would like to have a conversation. Well, we don't need to vote individually, but at least on gift two, I would like to have some conversation around that.
Sure. We can have conversation around all of them and then come back if you want to just take the total amount as one vote, or you can go back through and, and vote all of them individually.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion to accept gifts listed one through five here on our agenda.
Second.
I'm sorry. I thought you wanted clarification.
Well, I want to accept them, but then I want to discuss number two.
Can you just clarify the amount?
Oh, shoot.
Twenty, twenty-three, yeah. Twenty-three thousand nine hundred forty-four.
Said the total of one through five, whatever it is.
Twenty-three thousand nine forty-four fifty-nine.
Oh, was there a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The vote is unanimous.
So the Wi-Fi grant, all these are in your packet. Jen, do you want to hit on these at all?
I, that's not the one you had a question about, was it?
Yeah, I don't need to hear. I love Wi-Fi, but I don't need to hear about that one.
All right.
Great explanation in the packet. Yeah. I, so first I wanted to really recognize and appreciate this individual because this is not perhaps common, at least in my memory, of someone making this sort of gift. It, just to read it for the folks at home who are not able to read it for whatever reason. This very generous person is donating as a sign of appreciation for the high school and the staff and contributing to our school department is a way that they want to give back to the Winchester community. And they say, please use these funds in any way you consider appropriate. Best regards, men. And so one, I just wanted to single this out because again, this I think is unique. I've not seen these quite frequently. And other committee members, maybe you've been here longer, maybe you've seen some of these, but I would say they're uncommon. And they're certainly highly welcome as all gifts and grants are. The point I wanted to make, it's interesting. I hadn't looked at this carefully. I had seen all our gifts. I hadn't opened this particular one. I joked with Dr. Hackett earlier this afternoon about the Boston Latin School in Boston, which is one of the first public schools in the country, if not the first, depending on who you want to get in a debate with. My friend's son just got into collegiate, so we had a little back and forth.
Got a back and forth going on.
I think Boston Latin was first and I stand by it. He's wrong. You hear that Eric?
Think you're right.
Think you're in the right room for your argument.
Absolutely. And I'm just right on this one. So, so anyways, Boston Latin High School, for those that don't know, has an endowment, the high school itself, of over $60 million. And so I have always pondered that type of idea that, well, Boston Latin High School is a public high school in Massachusetts and they have this endowment. And would it be a terrible thing for Winchester High School to have its own endowment? And so I just mentioned this. We've just been given this gift from this individual that says, use it however you best see fit. And to me, it would be interesting to consider something along those lines because of course I know tomorrow we could spend that $1,000 on any number of things that would be helpful in the moment. But if we were to take a different course over the long term, for any of those that pay attention to the markets, a thousand dollars that had been invested over the last few years would have had a pretty nice return. And that's just a thousand dollars. And if we encourage people in the future who are looking for ways to support our schools and support our community to contribute to the Winchester High School endowment in whatever way they see fit, and it was continuously invested, we might be surprised how quickly it would grow and what a resource it might become to our high school. So I will now get off my soapbox, but thank you for that. And again, thank you to our donor. That's very much appreciated.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, Mr. Nixon.
I think that's an awesome idea for Mr. Brady. I like it a lot. And I just go to like policy and procedure as he was talking. And the first thing I wondered is, just like Winchester was one of the first communities to set up stabilization funds for capital, we had to go to Beacon Hill to make that happen. So my first reaction is, was there like a piece of legislation or something that was passed on Beacon Hill, you know, to make that possible? Cause that, that might, there actually might be like a statute requirement or something. But just knowing, because they are a public school, and I do think they're the oldest, that if, if it works for them, it should be able to work for Winchester High School. There ought to be a way to do it, but it, there might be some steps involved along the way. I think that's a really cool idea. And I would like, so I would like to know more about like what it would take to do something like that.
And I'll just way into to say that I, I too think it's a very, it's a wonderful idea. It's very innovative and, and fiscally responsible. I would just, and so I would love to learn more about it as well. And if such an endowment was set up, it would be, I'd also be curious to, to, curious of the, the process or the outcome of, of what the endowment would be for. Because I think there's some very worthy things that, that might help generate contributions and might be really impactful for thinking, thinking about our town as, you know, relatively well off. And, and, and there are ways that we could maybe level some playing fields.
And in other words, it implies that there would be a Winchester High School Endowment Board of Trustees. It would be some decision-making authority over those funds, which makes me think there's probably some legislation backing that up. That's a cool idea.
I'd like, just like to throw in there that that's an excellent topic, that is, Mr. Brady is the vice chair of the finance subcommittee, that he could certainly investigate and bring back a reward to the finance subcommittee. And it's a great idea and it sounds like you're really passionate about it. So.
I would be more than happy to do that.
As a committee member, I would completely encourage you to take that on and bring it back to us.
Put it on the agenda. I'm there.
And just to further disappoint Dr. Hackett, who thought we were going to get through gifts quickly, I just wanted to recognize we got a gift for $500 from a family that's grateful for the success of the postgraduate program at Winchester High School. And I, and I think it's sort of sad that the young man is leaving only because he's aged out. But they speak very eloquently to the great support that that program has provided. I don't recall a time we've ever received a gift earmarked for this program. And I was just happy to, happy to see this. I think it's terrific. And wish him well.
I would just add on and I appreciate Chris for you drawing attention to this because I, I think these programs are not often appreciated or perhaps understood maybe as well as they should be. And they're just, they're really important and they do great work and they really make a big impact. And so, you know, not only do I appreciate the gift from Sean and David, but I appreciate the fact that it just gives us an opportunity to highlight that program and what it's able to do and just the impact it has on our students.
Yeah. So to further my own disappointment, Jason, do you want to speak to the Winchester Hospital grant? Because it did come out this evening.
It was a good effort.
Been here most a year now. You gotta just know, right?
It was, it was a good effort.
It was a good effort.
Thanks.
I mean, you tried.
You gotta try.
That's all I can do, right?
That's what Charlie said. It's about trying, right?
Hope it's not a plan, however.
It's not just technology. It's about trying.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. Yeah, we did talk about it. Each year, Winchester Hospital issues its community health grant focusing on. Each year, Winchester Hospital issues its community health grant focusing on specific health indicators across the communities that it serves. Following our results from our Youth Risk Behavior Survey from this year, we had the idea to to create workshops specifically targeted at those three areas I mentioned before, healthy relationships, substance abuse and and mental health. And so, put together a grant and were accepted for the grant of $10,000 to support this, to support this program. We really feel like this will help help bolster our our new mentor program at the high school as well as educate our mentors and our mentees as well as our participating teachers.
I think had Jason talk about it and now I have a question.
I would be disappointed if you didn't. Miss Berksstrom.
Jason, is this.
She won't be the only one.
Mr. Levine, is this a, is this the money that's needed to start this up? Or will you expect this to be an ongoing expense that will need to account for in the operating budget to maintain a mentor program going forward? Like, I know sometimes things cost more at the initiation and then going forward.
Sure, sure. So WIFI did also partner to be a part of this grant, which brought us over the threshold of what it would cost to get this started. So we do believe that we have enough to continue it into into the coming year. But we wanted to first take first take a look at how the first year of implementation goes and then be able to reflect on it to determine changes and things like that. Also, Winchester Hospital shared that it's projects like this that they encourage communities to, when they see success with the with the grant, to reapply.
Oh, okay, great.
Over multiple years, that because of the target of it, we're not limited to to just applying once for this grant.
That's great, because I know WIFI often gives seed money, but then expects us to make it if we want to continue a part of our ongoing budgets. That's great if Winchester Hospital would be able, you would be able to continue to apply for that. That's great news. Thank you.
I also like that it is just the way that we've looked at, looked at the youth risk behavior survey data and looked at the results and that I think that this is something positive that's come out of just examining that.
So.
And focusing.
And I was just gonna, I mean, Jason, I want, first of all, I want to thank you for doing this and thank you for the time and effort you put in. And mention that it was fairly early in the fall when the youth risk survey results came out. And I expressed to multiple audiences that would listen and very few did, how that survey always drives me a little bit crazy because I have questions about the questions and how different school systems add and subtract questions. But then on top of that, you sit on this information that you've got, you know, students who have, who are, who are thinking about hurting themselves and it's a percentage and a raw number attached to it and you don't know who they are. So that conversation actually kind of led to or helped to lead to some of my goal development around using, trying to use data to to really make decisions or in support programming. And this one has always been one for me as a superintendent, since I've been in Massachusetts. It's always been concerning that we just get that data, we share it and we don't really do anything with it. And I'm just, I think this is great and I think it's, you know, you were the one who took the, you know, took the action to reach out and figure out what this meant. You went specifically into those areas that were targeted that we had data that showed concerns about and I sleep better at night seriously knowing that we're doing something. So I just want to express my appreciation to both you and to central office because we did go at this a few times in our little meetings that we enjoy. There's a lot of. Sometimes it feels like there's some, yeah, bullying.
Small but mighty.
Some, yeah, small but mighty. Yes, well said, well said. So.
Small but mighty.
But we, I mean, it was just, it was good discussion and it leads to the other things that we're talking about around how do we operate as a school system and what drives us.
Yep.
And you as a school system have made tremendous commitment over the last several years to social emotional learning through resources and hiring, but also in you, in recognition of the fact that your data are telling you something and you've made decisions, very strategic decisions, that had long-term implications, which I talked about in my formative around how you think about the public presentation of achievement data, how you think about achievement data overall, how you think about the implications of 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 performance and and talking about how, because I keep wanting to say, oh, how good we are and then I'm reminded that, yeah, we're, we rank well and and, you know, we should be proud of that, but that is also a a pressure that gets felt by the community, that then gets felt by teachers, that then directly impacts students. And and the fact that, you know, we've moved toward thinking differently about assessment and how we use data and and specifically the data that we're pulling from the YRBS. I don't think, I have not, I don't think, I have not seen a school system make more meaning out of those data than than this one. And, you know, so and the fact that that's been a long-term commitment, that it is alive and well here. I mean, this, you have established yourself is really, it's a core value. And and you do put your money where your mouth, which is what I was also thinking. I mean, even if if this works and if we can't find funding, it would absolutely be on a top of our priority that's coming back to you to maintain. So all that to say thank you and also a quick, are we done with the gifts? Have we completed that?
No, I'm not gonna let you off that easy. Also, thank you. This is very exciting. Can you give us a sense, and I apologize if I missed it, how many students are currently participating in the mentor program and what are you seeing for like the future? Like, what's kind of your goal for capacity?
Sure. So I I would have to involve Anna Paradise to talk about sort of future goal for capacity. You know, I think, I know today in our first workshop, we had just short, we have just short of 80, 80 students participating as mentors for next year.
That's excellent.
So those are current sophomores and current juniors. That will be next year's juniors and seniors.
That's really impressive. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would have been excited with 30 or 40.
Yeah.
We're a dedicated community. Okay, next up, I guess we will return to Dr. Hackett's discussion of.
About himself?
Yes.
It's always a good discussion. I enjoy talking about myself. Enough about me. What do you think about me? Got your mark's line.
Defense, it's less awkward for everyone else except for superintendent.
It is. It is. It is. Yeah, it is.
Just so everyone knows.
It is. You are absolutely right. So I, in the, again, you've been here since 5:30. So what I would like to do is just provide you with the information and around my formative. I did just kind of lead into part of what I've I covered here because part of this formative for me is also part of my entry and really thinking about what I've learned since I've been here and what I've seen and what I, you know, my first goal does talk about trying to understand the the hopes and the dreams and the beliefs and the values of the of the school community. And what we just talked about is really a big piece of it. And I won't go through all these slides, but I am in, from this, from the Department of Education process standpoint, administrators can now be either in a one-year cycle or a two-year cycle. Generally, when someone starts new, like myself, they are in the one-year cycle. So the one-year cycle being that there's a, within one year, there's a formative assessment and then there's a summative assessment. As you know, the goals, you know, we took some time to develop the goals. We were dealing with opening school and in this, you know, in the face of COVID once again and all those other issues that we were facing, but you did approve my goals in December. And then I have been, you know, have been working on aspects of those goals since that time and to a certain extent before that time. But one of the things that I struck me in this kind of reflective activity was just the, what I just said is that there has been a concerted articulated effort and and this goes back seven, eight, nine years, I think, to really focus on, systemically focus on the well-being of students and I would dare say staff. I think the understanding that how our staff feel about their job and what they need to expect and how they need to support our kids has a direct impact on not only their well-being, but also on the well-being of our students. And so, pulling from the YRBS, you know, this is, just continues to be evidence as to why this work is really pretty critical because we are a high-performing school system. We have all kinds of things we can get better at. There's no question. And and certainly academic achievement is a is a is a big piece or core of what we do. But we also know is that kids can't learn and staff can't teach if they are coming to school with high anxiety or depression or other mental health struggles. So just looking at the last YRBS, Winchester High School, the 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 biggest stressor of, in terms of anxiety and stress for our students, was school demands and expectations. And what what struck me about these data is that, you know, we're creating this, we are, we are a big piece of this for our kids. Now, that's not to say that parents while are are showing in in this survey, are showing that they are less of a influence at the middle level, anyway. We are still with these kids a pretty significant amount of time and to to, for kids to report that 42% of their their stress and anxiety is caused by the demands that they come, that come from school is something we can control and is something you have been working on to control directly. And I think that that is an important backdrop to where we are as a school system, dare I say we, where we are as a school system right now, because as you look back, you've made some real big decisions about how you want to move forward with student achievement and student performance. For example, you are, we are a founding member of MCIA and that was under Dr. Evans, I know, at the time. And Ms. Berksstrom has been involved. That group is being talked about by both or two of the gubernatorial candidates right now as being a model for looking at how we think about statewide assessment moving forward. So we are in, we are not only a founding member, I think, based on my observations and just participation and listening to Dr. Alan Emma and Lori at at meetings and talking about the different things that they're thinking about and talking about, I think we are a very strong contributing member to this group, to the point where, you know, to a certain extent, we're a little bit like a lab around assessment in the state. And it was one more thing that attracted me about applying for this position because I I just think that's the kind of work that we should be doing as opposed to having to constantly respond to different state mandates or federal mandates and not being able to think creatively about how we're doing everything with students that we have in front of us. So I just pulled some goals and these are all, I think, actually Dr. Evans' goals. In fact, the 2016, 2017 one says a continuation. I don't remember exactly when she started, but, you know, for for quite a few years in a row, that has been, I mean, there's only three or four goals in any given year. That has been a significant goal that has been prominent in the superintendents and the district's work that they've been doing. So, you know, not the least of which the last couple of years has been also trying to figure out how to manage school in a time of COVID. So, you know, I think, as I thought about this last year and the prior year and the fact of what we have done and I think we need to, we all need to remind ourselves because this has not been an easy year for you, for our staff, for our kids. You've made some huge decisions. You've, you have received a lot of feedback on how we're doing as we continue to work with students during a pandemic. You received a whole lot of feedback last year, I know, as I did in a different location. But I really thought this was a great quote, just talking about the fact that, you know, we we need to make sure, and I think we did this well, that we take care of and play, pay really close attention to the socio-emotional, social emotional needs of children in the beginning and throughout this year, understanding that we've got to get them back to and and have to pay attention to their well-being before they're going to be able to really be able to learn and before we worry too much about getting them caught up for what I think is really lost instructional time, not necessarily lost learning time, because we know that they're better when they're in front of us. And we came out of last year in all kinds of different variations of schedules and configurations that we all did the best we could. And I speak for myself and all of you, but we all know it wasn't, it was not ideal. It wasn't what school really is and and it's not public schooling at its best. So I pulled that just because I think it's important to remind ourselves that we started this, just last year, we were doing hybrid, right? I mean, and and remote and this has been the first full year that we've been back full-time. And with that has come a lot of challenges. You know, we've, we've talked about staff well-being. We've talked about people feeling burnt out. We've talked about having a hard time hiring people. We've talked about increases in special education referrals. I mean, all of those things have been a real challenge for for us this year, which I I'm hoping as we move into next year, we can, we can move one step further away from because we've not really been able to think, in my view, and maybe I'll speak for myself, it's been difficult to think strategically and creatively and innovatively this year in the year that we're in. And I I feel like the light's there that we're now in, you know, we're now at a point this time of year that we can really start setting up next year and we can return to the beacons which we started this year with and we start talking about our district planning for next year and how do we think about our goals moving forward? And are the beacons what we want to stick to or is it time for us to think differently about some things? So I I really am excited about the next steps through the spring, through the summer and setting up the a plan or a framework for a strategic plan and some of the other work that we're doing. And I'm, I'm gonna, just gonna end there, other than just to show you what.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Just to clarify, when you said it's difficult this year, is that part of yourself, are you talking about you right now with the year we have, and by the way, a lot of stuff on your plate, which we saw some samples of tonight? Or are you saying it's difficult for us sort of as a system this year?
It's difficult as a system.
Okay.
Definitely. And I mean, not that, I mean, the stuff that we talked about tonight is stuff that superintendents do and it's just part of the work. But in terms of how our staff are doing and how our kids are doing and the dysregulation of behaviors that we're seeing and the referrals that we're getting and the conversations that we're having, you know, one of the things that that Jen and Pam have been working on lately and doing a great job of is just having meetings with buildings about talking about where the referral rates look like, where are the referrals coming from, how many kids do we have for pull-out services? Because you went to a co-teaching model not too long ago and I think what's happened is we've gone in this year is everyone is feeling the pressure to get kids all caught up in three months and it's impossible. It's just not going to happen that way. So I think that some of the decisions that are getting made instructionally aren't decisions that you would have made two, three years ago when you made a commitment to going to a different model that definitely showed improvement of just MCAS scores off the top, but just really the least restrictive environment, co-teaching, making sure our kids are in the classroom and really pulling out as least as possible and really focused on pushing services. So I think because of the pressure of just in in seeing these kids in front of us, wanting to do the right thing and help, I think it has just really changed how we would normally have worked with kids. And this, to me, goes back to, we've got to continue to remember that it's our job in leadership to make sure the staff know that they can breathe, that they have our support, that we understand it's going to take some time and that we don't want to get away from best practices just because we're trying to solve an immediate issue, right? So, yeah, that.
So I appreciate the clarification and in that context, I think Jen has previously said sometimes we have to take a step back and focus on what's really important. It's an opportunity to prioritize to.
Right. And I think we've done that, but I think it has been at the detriment perhaps of other things, but it's been the most important work we've had to do.
And I think to Frank's point, if you ask any veteran educator, the majority of them would say this has been the most challenging year they've worked. I've heard that time and time again.
I'm not, I didn't mean to question. I just wanted to understand, were you saying that from your personal frame or were you talking about the district as you were going to another slide?
What I care about is the district. I mean, as a superintendent, yeah, I mean, if I'm speaking personally, this has been the hardest two years of my career without even question, not even, not even, not even blinking. It's been the most difficult two years of our career, my career. We've just had, there's just been, it's been hard. I mean, it just has been really hard, you know? So and I think that we've rightfully had to and you have. I mean, we know we get emails that come in and, you know, they melt your face when they first come through your inbox. when they first come through your inbox because people are also feeling the stress and the pressure of their own life in this pandemic. And they are upset and they're scared and they're worried and they, they want help. And, and, you know, then you're on the receiving end trying to think, okay, how do we help in the short term, but also not lose sight of the longer term, which is what we know our best practices should be. So-
You made it again. It's a really good point that no matter what's going on, if we go back to our best practices, they work.
That's right.
And I've, at this, I've seen people have said that this year. We have gone back to best practices that we really didn't do or couldn't do last year. And the results have been very positive. So I'm excited as we're able to talk more about our results as well.
Agreed. And the conversation was great tonight, just around the word languages. I mean, it's exciting to start thinking that maybe we're going to talk about things like that and not just about how we're responding to COVID or how we're dealing with, you know, those kinds of pieces. So I'll just quickly just show you, I, this will be live soon, but so this, these are my goals. These are the objectives. And then I have different action steps that are in here that I, some of which you've seen and some of which I've have continued to fill out and will continue to fill out. So some of those will change. The goals won't change. The objectives won't change really. But, and then just kind of a, an indicator about where we are with some of these, you know, I brought you to goal-
Is there any way to blow that up a little bit?
Sure.
Zoom in a little?
I brought you to goal three first because-
Are you going to share this with us?
Yes, I am. Yep, yep.
Getting there.
Yeah, I can't go too much bigger. It blows everything off the screen. But again, it's the, it's the goal. It's the objective. And then there are action steps. There's just, you know, this is actually just a pulldown and then kind of a status which does roll up into, at the goal level, roll up into the dashboard that I had showed you a while ago. I showed you this goal because I-
The green is pretty hard to read.
I, yeah, it is, it is on the screen right there.
Especially for my eyes at 9:42.
And that's why I'm just running you through quickly, just so you can have a sense of what you're going to be looking at.
Just going to admit it.
Don't blame you.
The black.
My eyes are a little dry.
I can read the black.
And there's a couple for, you know, so in goal one, I just to point out that there are some items here and action steps that I haven't either started, haven't intended to start, or just haven't gotten to, that, you know, we, I need to continue to, to try to, to work through and get back on target with. But, so that's what you'll see. I'll be able to provide it in a color printout, but you'll also have access to it online prior to the meeting.
Be great.
Thank you.
Yep. That's it.
Well, so I'd like to sort of build on that. And I appreciate the transparency that your dashboard includes red items. A lot of times dashboards only include green items. And so, yeah, and I think that transparency is good. Ooh, the mic works. So, I turned this way and I can hear myself. So, so, you know, as I understand, you know, the superintendent evaluation process has this two-step process with a formative and the summative evaluation, but effectively it's, it's a self-assessment. And, and, you know, Dr. Hackett is our interim superintendent, but, but who came here with, you know, a desire, anyway, to be, to be permanent. And you've been here for nine months. And, you know, we as a committee have had some time to get to know you. But we wanted to, to do, create a process and really get more input from the community, as you, as you know, because you've been very supportive of us. In fact, you know, you're very supportive, just saying you can talk to anyone you want about anything. And so I wanted to share that we, we had, as a committee, you come up with a process and spent the last couple of months meeting with probably 40 or 50 people, you know, across our community. And these are folks, you know, who are in the district, you know, principals and assistant principals and administrative staff and central office and the teachers' union, et cetera, across the parent community, you know, PISC and the parent associations, foundations, Wynn PAC, and across the broader town, you know, municipal leaders at all different levels from public health and public works, public safety, finance, engineering, planning, management. And just to, to say that, that, you know, we wanted to really just get a pulse, you know, beyond what we see of you, but to see, you know, what does the community see of you and what have they heard and how do they feel that you've been doing in your time here? And so we've gathered a, you know, a great deal of input from, from, again, all these constituencies. And these aren't just, you know, they're, they're all wonderful people, but they're also people who, you know, represent constituencies within our town. And so I feel, you know, we had a very broad input. And, and it was, you know, we'll talk more about it probably at our next meeting, but it was overwhelmingly positive with some, you know, constructive, you know, areas for development in there. But, you know, and so I just wanted to share, you know, as, as we're going through this process, that, that, you know, you know, that we, we have been listening and we appreciate your, your, you know, complete openness to, to say, go out and talk to anyone about anything. I'm an open book here and I see that in the dashboard you have up here as well. And, and, you know, I look forward to, to talking a little bit more about, about this next time. But, but just wanted to share that before we close tonight.
Thank you.
So thanks.
Any other comments from the committee?
So just aside from the dashboard, you'll, you'll inform us if any supporting evidence or anything else that we'll expect an email from you about that where we could go find it.
Yep. Yep. I've got a folder and everything.
I was just going to say, is there, shall we look for a folder that has all the evidence?
You shall look for a folder.
I shall then.
Okay. I try to make it not just a checklist of, look, here's my calendar kind of thing.
Right. I appreciate the background you provided and the, the context also that you provided for us tonight because I think context is extremely important. For school districts across the country right now, I think everybody is, a lot of the things you described and Mr. Brady reiterated are things that all this, many school districts across the country are feeling. And I think that in looking at the information you've provided and information specific to Winchester, I think what's most important is how we've responded to that. So, and knowing that you have only been here since July 1st and that's not even a complete school year yet, I, it's, it's just really, it's really great, as Mr. Hopcraft said, to see the transparency around where we are on some of that progress and the work we still have to do.
I'm glad that you brought back the, just the status update.
Yeah.
The, the backside and then the, and then I'm looking in the public facing. So I think that's great. And as members have said, in terms of transparency and giving us an update. So I'm looking forward to the detail.
And only because as we reach the end of the agenda here shortly, we don't have future agenda items explicitly on this agenda. But just to be clear, we will, I think we'll be in a position to talk a little, in a little more detail about some of the feedback that Mr. Hopcraft described. But, but we will also talk more through your formative, right? So we will have had a chance to see the folder, see the dashboard, see supporting evidence. Are you planning on having some remarks of your own on the formative when we meet again?
Yes. Yeah, I will. But yeah, I won't go on. But it should be Felix's self-explanatory and I would imagine you might have questions, so.
I just want to echo the appreciations of the transparency. And I think that definitely has been quite impactful and I really appreciate it. And then I'll also say, you know, this, this is the last formative I have to do this year, Frank. So I look forward to getting it done next time.
You just want to check off the list, right?
You know, I'm just-
It's my last one. My other ones were done in January.
The blocks on a list, that's all I am.
My other ones were done in January. I got one more formative to do, so.
So I, and I just, I just can't let this one last thing go. I'm sorry. But the other thing I appreciate about the information that you showed us is I think it is incredibly hard sometimes, even for us as school committee members, to quantify for the public what a superintendent does. And I think that the way that you have presented the information on the document that's tracking sort of where we are in goals and where we are in projects in the district is, I, I mean, this is only my going into, well, I guess it is going to wow my such year. I haven't seen that before in a formative summative assessment tracked in exactly that way. They, and we've talked about communication on this committee too. And I think it's just an incredible communication tool to sort of quantify the work around the district as well as the work around your jobs. So everybody can understand it better too.
It's very exciting to see that when you showed that in December.
Thank you.
Just have to figure out where it all sits so people know that it's there.
Right.
I mean, it really, I, it's a great tool. There, we have a lot of great tools in this district, but I also have sometimes people just tend to go off into their own corner and sort of fume about what they, what we don't share, what they don't know. And it's like, oh, it's right there.
And speaking of which, I shared this earlier, but Mr. Levine introduced me to an incredible guidance website at the middle school. So if parents are looking for help around guidance at the middle school, if you, if you find that on the McCall website, if people are looking for help, there is an amazing resource there that I imagine that Mr. Levine has worked with the guidance department there to develop. So I just also want to thank you for that publicly. That was a great tool.
And then it is the team that really put it all together.
Yeah.
I think one of the things-
So thank you to them too.
Jason mentioned the conversation. And just to, you know, one of the, one of the pieces of communication within the action of the objectives is to, is to launch fairly soon, before the end of the school year, a new website that-
That's just what I was going to say.
That's cleaned up because, you know, I can't find stuff on our website and I don't, and I know what I'm looking for. It's not, it's no one's fault. It's just, that's what can happen is, you know, over years, things just kind of, they just start clicking down. And how many clicks does it take to get to the, you know, the center of the lollipop for certain things? And one thing is hot, one point is not hot anymore. And then, so we're really working on trying to build the site with, as cleanly as possible so that those kinds of resources don't get lost. Because that is the stuff that parents would want to find quickly or, so.
Can't wait to see that either. It'll be exciting.
Me either.
I've spent many years clicking and an Aspen.
It's always a challenge.
Anything else? Then I believe we move on to-
Chair report.
Chair report. Well, I'd just say that based on this evening's meeting, I think we can all see it's been very busy. There's a lot of stuff going on in the district. There is a lot of stuff going on in our schools, with our students, with our staff. And the school committee is no less busy and it is important for us to just stay focused as we move forward going through the spring and these next few months. Superintendent report?
I have spoken enough. Thank you.
Yes. And then, let me just see, why do we have our agenda up here? Next meetings, we have April 12th, April 25th, and May 9th, all at 6:00 PM. I vaguely recall that we had had some talk of an April 5th, adding in an April 5th meeting.
It was related to the MSBA. What's that?
MSBA and EFPBC. So I'm not, let's talk to Jay afterwards and see what he thinks.
Okay.
I think maybe tonight might have taken care of it.
It may have. Yeah, we just, what's that?
We do.
I didn't hear.
Oh, we have a-
They have a meeting that night.
We have a meeting.
Well, there you go.
Another community organization.
Well, we, we should just circle back and see if Jay's all set. If there's anything else the EFPBC needs from us or we can just kind of feed information.
Okay.
Just because I don't see future agenda items on here. We just talked about a couple, obviously.
Right. In writing.
Yeah. Can we go through future agenda items?
School, so I want to throw out there, school choice is something we always have to talk about, I think, in May. But typically before school choice, we talk about open enrollment.
Open enrollment.
And I just suggest that in the context of, you know, finding a way to get kids off-site at Lynch in some capacity we have in our schools. So, you know, we talked about, well, do you move preschool? Do you move kindergarten? Whatever the other option might be. Do we try to act a little earlier with an open enrollment opportunity, Dr. Hackett? Or maybe you want to, you know, stay away from that. So if, if there's anything you need from us to help, particularly if there's like some policy that we need to consider, because open enrollment, you know, typically you say, well, you're, you moved to this district and now you're there for the rest of the kids' elementary education and you're on the hook for transportation.
And siblings don't get priority.
And siblings don't get priority. And so, and that, all that contributes to why we have some takers each year, but not many. So maybe just putting this in your head, this may be something we maybe could work with you on if there's some things we should reconsider about what open enrollment might look like, if that could be helpful. But if that were to be helpful, we'd have to have some time to talk about that as a committee. I'm assuming unless that's like policy subcommittee or something, but it, we would need to spend some time to think about what we would do to change that as a tool.
And are you saying that that usually comes after school choice? In which case school choice is a public hearing and we'd need a month?
School choice, school choice is totally, there's no requirement for open enrollment.
I think you were just saying that we think about them around-
Same time.
We tend to think about, we tend to think of them at the same time, but school choice is, we're required to take it up every state.
With a public hearing.
Yes.
With a public hearing.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Appropriate notification.
But I'm saying that is a totally, I'm just suggesting open enrollment is something-
You're just connecting Chris's head.
Yeah. Well, there, yeah, there's a connection between the two of them, certainly.
So I just, I wanted to throw that out there. That's all.
So I would, I mean, I would, policy subcommittee has nibbled around the edges on this conversation. I would think it's appropriate for them to meet and review that, come back to you. And I think that that can happen. I don't see any reason why that can't be at least a first round of conversation at the school committee level on, on the 12th. And then that would position you to think, because then it's school vacation week and then you're almost into May. So-
And town meeting.
Yeah.
I only raise it because I want to be sure if there's something we need to do as a committee.
Yep, absolutely.
We're not holding you up.
Totally here, yeah.
We've had, yeah.
I'm glad to know that that's already been-
It has because it gives me anxiety.
Sorry. But good.
Yes, absolutely. Good anxiety.
Yeah.
Motivating.
We'll get you a mentor in place.
Thank you.
We have also, I also heard earlier tonight, you know, part of our reorganization was to schedule a norms workshop. So we should have that as a-
Okay.
Or just a process, whatever.
Yeah, whatever it's called, a workshop.
Yes.
A school committee workshop.
Yes.
So maybe a doodle poll might be appropriate for that.
Absolutely.
And then we also talked about having another reorganization as an agenda item for a future meeting.
Yep.
So we want to put that. With that, I would just want to remind the committee that the high school senate last year had asked, at least myself and I believe Tom, about the Metco program and expressed their interest in it. And I had asked that be an agenda item and we're almost going on a year where it hasn't made it to an agenda. So I'd like to remind the committee that that's something that the high school senate wanted us to discuss. We've gone a year without discussing it. So I would again say it's something we should put on our agenda. At least out of respect for them.
Dr. Hackett, would that start in a subcommittee? Because that doesn't seem, it seems like there would have to be information prepared in a presentation. I'm thinking about Mr. Brady's request. And Metco doesn't sound like a small agenda item to me. It sounds like a large agenda item because of all of the-
Oh, absolutely.
All the implications involved in it. Is, would there be an appropriate subcommittee to do that work? Or would you need a separate working group to do that work, to bring it back to school committee? Because it's not just, I don't feel like that's something we can just pop on an agenda. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
To do it meaningfully and to do it justice.
I mean, I, I almost wonder whether it would be a good topic of discussion with your norms and goal setting as a school committee? Because to me, that is a significant, that's a significant program. It's a, it's a change and not just with the school, within the school community. How would we prepare for that? How would we make sure our kids-
Right.
We did have the medical, we had Metco program and Braintree. There were some things we did really well with it. There's some things we didn't do well with it at all. There are a lot of structural issues with Metco and challenges that we would want to make sure we've visited sites, we've talked to people, we've understood and anticipate. So, I mean, from my perspective, that would be a, like in the cycle of, of a process, it would be one year of exploring, one year of planning and one year of implementation if that was the route that you wanted to go. So to your point, it's, I mean, it's a, it would be a significant conversation that I think- that I think would be appropriate to start at the school committee level in a visioning, goal, planning kind of workshop. If that's what the committee's interested in doing. I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I think that's where it should start.
Can I just chime in and say, to avoid it being unnecessarily squishy, it would be helpful to know what the students actually want us to talk about. And I'm, and I'm not being thick about that. There are many different elements that we could talk about. It, it has been discussed, it's been a while, a long time, but it has been discussed previously.
I'm surprised specifically to Metco, so.
So.
Yeah, that their interest was in us bringing Metco to Winchester. And they were curious as to.
So that's different than what you just said a moment ago, which is they'd like us to talk about Metco. So I, it, it would be helpful to understand what it is they want us to talk about. And I'd love, maybe if some of those folks, because you're right, that was a while ago. If some of those folks are still at the high school, I'd like to understand what, if they have specific questions. Because there may have been obstacles to it in the past that are either not present or different today. I don't think we've ever had it in Winchester. It's interesting.
We have not.
Had that experience in Braintree. Neighboring communities, you know, have it. So, I mean, we can talk about it. It'd be helpful to understand.
The parameters of the conversation.
Well, the parameters and, and so what, what is the question or the questions? And is it, is sort of a fact-finding conversation to, to actually understand not just what it is, but how it might be implemented? Is that, is that the goal? Or do we understand operational obstacles and the goal is to try to eliminate those? Are there financial ramifications that we need to understand? I mean.
Well, and I'm even going back one step before that even, Mr. Nixon, and is Metco even interested, willing, able to expand to more districts right now? I mean, because if, you, you, do you see what I'm saying? Like, I feel like we even need to do some, to Dr. Hackett's, through a workshop, some internal and then maybe assign a committee member to do, or committee members to do some more work on that. Because I feel like we can have many hypothetical conversations at this table about, about any one of those questions or that the students have. But we need to even understand what the possibilities are first. Like, it feels, it doesn't feel, it doesn't feel like a genuine conversation at the table if we don't have the background even to know whether.
Yeah, I would just wonder, I would wonder whether or not it's even, isn't, something like this to me, this, I think about, this is a conversation around diversity, equity, and inclusion, I, I think, right? I mean, so it is a, Metco is a program that promotes diversity within school communities. So that's what that is.
Right.
There are other ways to promote diversity. There are other ways to promote inclusion and equity. Is that the answer or solution? Or is there, is it one of many? And, and to me, and we, well, I'll say it now, but diversity, equity, and inclusion is something that we need to further our work on. And that will show up in what I share with you, just in terms of my thinking about next steps and where we're going as we think about our district-wide plan and our vision. Because I think we have to rethink all of that. I mean, it's time for us to sit down and just kind of maybe even just start from scratch and think, who are we? What are we about? We know what we are right now and where are we going? So answering to a student group, and I hope that I wasn't here when that happened, because I honestly don't remember it, and I know I wasn't. But, but when that conversation happened, you know, now I think we're maybe at a different place. And I think as a committee and as a school system, that is a great conversation in and around how we think about diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Right.
And then that may lead to, let's explore these three different things, you know, as part of that. I mean, I don't know all the answers with, that you just asked with Metco. I mean, they've gone through a lot of structural changes. I, you, I believe Mel Rose has, has participated in the Metco. I think they are in a much better place now than they were three or four years ago.
Right.
When it was close to actually dissolving. So, but so we can certainly start finding out information about the logistical pieces. But I think taking one giant step back is what, you know, what are we about and why is this of interest to us? And, and how do we, I mean, the biggest thing to me is how you support the students and the families that are with you. Because that's, I mean, kids, students are on the bus for two or three hours a day. I mean, it's a huge commitment for these kids in some locations. They're riding the T, you know, commuter rail. And I think, you know, it's almost has to be not just a school committee conversation, but almost a community conversation. Because there has to be that level of support of the community.
But to your point, that's many steps down the line.
It is many steps down the line, but it is part of the conversation about, this is bigger than just Metco.
Right.
Think, right? It's bigger. It's about, how does this community feel about diversity and supporting diversity? And what part do we play as a school department in it?
So in other words, I was just trying to clarify. So that, I'm just interested in knowing, what was the genesis of the conversation? What was it? Was it initially and always about Metco for a specific reason? Or is it a broader DEI conversation of which Metco is a part? And I hope I don't misquote you, but I thought I heard from Mr. Brady at one point, support for maybe, you know, almost like a DEI director, like sort of a, a staff-level position. I think that that came up at one of our meetings at some point. Maybe it wasn't Mr. Brady, but.
I'm not sure. I said I wanted a staff-level position.
Oh, sorry. May have, sorry. For, forgive me. I, I remember it was from that side of the table.
That's okay.
I said I wasn't sure. But, but what's, what's great about whenever that, that was in the past few, what, months or what have you? That's exciting stuff. But that then speaks more to a strategic shift in thinking and a commitment to so many things under the umbrella, of which Metco is one.
Right. And I think the conversation is a values conversation. And I think it starts with, who are we? Who do we want to be? What do we, what makes us better? And then, because sometimes I, you know, school systems are really good at finding the solution before they know the problem, right? So I've seen school systems run out and hire diversity, equity, and inclusion. I've seen some school systems do that really well. And it's made a huge impact. I've seen some school systems where everyone starts wondering, what's this person even doing here? And they don't feel supported because there's no community connection. And so I, I think, you know, we want to be obviously successful in everything we do. And these are really important discussions to be successful in, because the last thing we want to do is set anybody up for failure around this stuff. So I just think you are relatively still a new committee. I am, you know, sitting here, new still. And I think that that larger conversation is really important too. And I'm not suggesting it takes years. I'm not looking for a vision quest, but I'm just saying that I think you.
It's not one meeting.
It's not one meeting and it's more than twenty minutes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And to my point though, it's now been well over nine months and I've asked to start the conversation and we still haven't started it. So I'm asking again to start the conversation. And we can talk all around it. But again, I want to start the conversation soon. I don't want it to be an agenda item next November.
Yeah. No, I, I mean, I understand. I guess the question, I just have, what, what is the agenda item? I just think this work this group has to do prior to, I mean, we can.
Well, to be clear, the agenda item would be to discuss the Metco program and to investigate it. Obviously, we're not going to make a decision on it. We're, we're going to begin a conversation about it. And that conversation could conclude with, it's not really something that is going to work at this time or it's not something that we're really interested in as a committee. But again, I'm asking that it be brought up on behalf of these students. Because again, I appreciate what they were talking about and I appreciated the moment they were talking about it was also important. The time they were talking about it was again, last year. So it was relevant and I don't want that to get lost. Because yeah, I'm sure they're, they're older. Some of them may have graduated, but I'm still going to honor their point because it was important.
Yeah, and I wasn't here for it, so.
Yeah, you were not.
And I, I would just add that I recall a meeting where I think I brought it up as well, because I think you had made a request and it was not on future agenda. So that was just my way of acknowledging this, this could be an interesting conversation.
And it has never appeared in print on future agenda. So I would, I would at least like to see it appear there. And I, I don't believe that's accidental.
No, I believe that's, I do not remember.
I'll just close by saying that I, I think having a goals discussion and figuring out, you know, some focus around where we want to be and for our, you know, the wood behind the arrow would be great. And then, you know, certainly I, I think then talking about, you know, the solutions that, you know, should fall in line and we should look at lots of solutions to those goals.
All right. Anything else?
Pushing to a turn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.